I think.
All right.
Welcome, everybody. How are we doing? We're gonna have an intimate group this morning. We do have some people in the virtual audience, so you'll be joining them. My name's Joe Griffiths. I'll give it have more chance to introduce myself as we advance through the slides. I'm joined by some colleagues online and colleagues here. Andrew, you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, Andrew.
Yeah. So we'd have we have quite a bit of content to share with you. There's a make sure you sign in. Probably remind you again at some point because it's very important. We need all your information so we can send you the the course certificate. And there's an agenda back there and a packet if you would like to to go to follow through as we go through. Well, since you all are here in person and we're such a small audience, I'm gonna take the time for you all to introduce yourself. Sorry for the virtual folks, but we'll start over here. Introduce yourself. Actually. Oh, actually, sorry, I want Sarah, can we get the microphone? Can you do that one more time? Because the people in the virtual audience can't hear you. I'm sorry. Usually, we don't do this, but it's such a small audience, I thought we could. We're gonna have folks introduce themselves.
Good morning. My name's Brooke Cotman. I'm Poughkeepsie City's Councilmember of District Four.
Welcome.
So this is the Eastern Shore table then. So good morning, I'm Matt Drew. I'm with Salisbury Y Comico Planning Commission as a planning commissioner.
John Cohill Hancock Planning Commission.
Tom Ireland Calvert County Board of Appeals.
Mike Quaid Ocean City Maryland Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, you didn't have to come very far. All right. Well, if the people in the audience or the virtual audience want to maybe put their name in the chat or something, I'm not sure if other people can see it, but we have I have some colleagues joining me online who are going to handle a lot of the technical stuff and Andrew's helping with the audio. Hopefully, everything goes smoothly. We'll see. These things tend hybrid. Hybrid meetings are always a little bit tricky. But we'll go ahead and get started. Introduce it. All right. Can we maybe move this little thing out of the way a little bit?
Go ahead and drag it to the top later.
At least for now, I didn't want to do that. I'll go back. Well, that's close enough. All right. Okay, so the nine other states, everybody always asks me so much what ones they are, and I don't know. So there are nine other states that require training or education for planning commissioners and Board of Appeals members were one of them. Maryland's specific requirement was created in 2009 as part of the smart, green, and growing legislation of Senate Bill two eighty and House Bill two ninety seven. The intent was to ensure that everyone appointed to important positions, the planning commission's Board of Appeals understood the rules, responsibilities, laws, ethics, best practices, and just the everyday work of the position. But we also encourage people, we got a councilperson here, to that are just interested in planning. We we think this is a great training for, you know, professional planners, elected officials, people just interested in planning. So we're glad you're all here. The specific requirement ours is that our requirement is that all planning commission and Board of Appeals members who are serving on boards have to complete at the time it was created, it was July first, twenty ten, but the law now says within six months of appointment. So yeah. So there'll be question and answer opportunities throughout the training. We have slides that stop sometimes in the middle of modules. We'll have four distinct modules. And then sometimes at the end. For those joining virtually, you can submit questions using the Zoom chat or raise your hand. And I believe John, my colleague, can can unmute you. Hopefully, everybody can hear us online as well. So as Sarah was coming around with the microphone, we do ask that if any of you have questions or comments you want to make, that you please speak into the microphone. Otherwise, the people in the virtual audience won't be able to hear you. Right? That's what I had. Okay. Okay, so who does this apply to? The requirements for this class apply to all planning commissions, planning boards, and Board of Appeals members in charter and non-charter counties and municipalities. I know we're here at MML, but we did have somebody from Calvert County here, so that does apply across the board. We'll go a little bit into the difference between charter and non-charter counties later on. Once you've received this education, there's no current requirement that you have to retake it. You know, there's that six month requirement at the beginning. But of course, as planning techniques, issues, and case law, case law evolve, keeping up to date, we strongly encourage that. I know particularly Adam Snyder, our Assistant AG, who's out prepping for his session, but he'll be in here later. It's very diligent in updating with new case law. So when we get to the legal section, you'll have a lot of new updates. All right. So this is just one of the versions of the class, you know, we Maryland Department of Planning, back when the requirement first started, creating an online version as well, where you can go online and take it. We need to do some updating to that online version. I think the in-person version is more up to date. It also gives a lot of more time for back and forth. So I definitely think if you're going to pick between one that you would take the in-person version, but that the online version also works for the requirement and does have a wealth of information that you can go back and read at your at your leisure at planning dot Maryland dot gov. We have, if you're interested in the the more the more detailed version that we have online, we're happy to. You can download the materials online or we can send you hard copies if you like, but you also have all the slides. There you go in front of you. And as I mentioned before, make sure you give us your address, phone number, and email address before you leave, so we can make sure we get that our certificate to you in with with due haste. It'd probably be next week sometime. All right. But first, we want to make sure we thank you because Planning Commissioners, Board of Appeals Members, and most jurisdictions in Maryland are volunteers. And we know that that shows dedication to your community. It requires nights that you would probably rather be spending with family or on your hobbies. But we appreciate it. And it's not just the nights going to the meetings. We know it requires reading materials ahead of time. And sometimes, you know, get some angry people at your meetings. I understand how it goes. So we appreciate it, and it's your 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 dedication is valued. So here are the today's speakers. That's me on the left and the Director of Planning Best Practices for the Maryland Department of Planning. Adam Snyder is our counsel. He's out there, the one I mentioned, prepping for the legal section. The legal section is always very interesting, especially because he's updating constantly lots of questions. So you can look forward to that. And then our Assistant Secretary of Planning Services Chuck Boyd is joining us virtually. You can see his name right up there. That is what he looks like, and you'll see his face when it's his turn to go. Okay. So we're gonna start off with the foundations of planning. I'm gonna do this section and then we'll switch to Law and Ethics after that. So what makes Maryland unique? Maryland has always been a magnet for growth. One, its proximity to Washington DC, the nation's capital, the beaches where we are now, but also the mountains. I'm sure you've all heard America in miniature. But also its farmland and forests, historic towns, and just central location along the eastern shore seaboard have always created. It's been appealing place to live, and it's a bit of magnet for growth. So Maryland is small physically, right here, the size square and square miles of the states of in the US. See, we're way down there towards the bottom. But Maryland is the fifth densest state in the US. So this is population, right? With an average six hundred twenty-three people per square mile. This doesn't mean that all of Maryland is crowded. I think you all know that if you've driven around, nor does it have to be. But it is concentrated in certain areas. Good local planning is vital to ensuring that Maryland can accommodate everyone, and and we'll talk about future growth as well, who wants to live here without impacting Maryland's natural resources. If Maryland had the side, for example, if Maryland had the size and population of Montana, planning would probably be less comprehensive here, right? We're gonna go into the history of planning in Maryland, but you know, state leaders, local leaders have recognized for a long time that we have to focus on planning in this state because of the size of Maryland and because of the the population that lives here. And these are from the twenty nineteen census population estimates, probably. I was trying to update them yesterday, but I had trouble with the slides, but it hasn't changed too much. Since then. All right. So we're gonna talk about a history of good planning in Maryland. We're gonna continue to learn about it throughout this class. What do Maryland planners do? Maryland planners help determine the efficient. Yeah, not there yet. Determine the efficient land use for homes, stores, jobs, schools, and services. We also Maryland planners also protect farms, forests, and natural resources. But I know we've talked a lot about natural resources so far, but there are other resources to preserve as well. So I'm gonna I'm gonna try to make this as interactive as possible, throw it back to you all. What other kind of resources would planners or just local leaders want to preserve? Where's the microphone? Sarah, oh, microphones are here. Anybody have any thoughts? I know it's early. I hope you have. We'll say historic resources. Any others? Major employers. All right, well, we're warming up. We're warming up. We're gonna get into a lot of different resources that we have to preserve, and I gotta remember to give you this microphone when we get back to that. But we'll start with natural resources. Start off with agricultural preservation, which is something that the Maryland Department of Planning and other state agencies are heavily involved with, but also local governments and a lot of resources at the state level to help with this. So we'll talk about priority preservation areas first, or PPAs, their designations for land that contains productive agricultural or forest soils and or supports profitable agricultural and forestry enterprises. They are governed by local policies that stabilize the agricultural and forest land base. Is that Ruth? Welcome, Ruth. See you twice in two weeks. Welcome. The Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation, which has a funny sounding acronym called MALP. It's hard to say. It was established in nineteen seventy-seven. MALP purchases. Oh, yeah, thanks. Agricultural preservation easements that forever restricted development on prime farmland and woodland. Combining the foundation's program with county and other state land preservation programs, Maryland has preserved more agricultural land for future production than any other state. The MDP and MALP jointly administer the program for the certification of county agricultural land preservation programs. And another one is the Rural Legacy Board. Rural Legacy provides funding through the Department of Natural Resources to preserve large contiguous tracts of land and to enhance natural resource, agricultural, forestry, and environmental protection while supporting a sustainable land base for natural resource-based industries. The idea is to create public-private partnerships and allow those who know the landscape best, such as land trusts or local governments, to determine the best way to protect the landscapes that are critical to our economy, environment, and quality of life. And you'll see this through a lot of Maryland programs that, while they be administered locally, and there are certain framework that they have to be within. The state provides resources, the really a lot of the decisions are made locally because they're the ones, those are planning commissioners and others are the ones that know their communities best. The Maryland Department does track land preservation efforts and successes in Maryland. We developed this land preservation dashboard. It's designed to help users assess the status of Maryland's land preservation efforts, access the tabular data that informs the dashboard, and access available land preservation GIS data. For the Maryland Department of Planning, a lot of other state agencies, if you like maps as much as I do, as much as planners do, there's a lot of things to play around with. So I encourage you to to check them out. This was created in coordination with DNR and and Maryland Department of Planning's Geospatial and Data Analysis Unit, that basically are GIS folks, geographic information systems. It incorporates data from local, state, federal, and non-governmental preservation programs. So you can see, I mean, just the the amount of colors on there. How much has been preserved? I mean, it's the stuff in the middle actually is is not preserved, but but a lot of the green stuff around the edges. Okay. So we're gonna continue with the history of good planning. So planning planners help protect historic resources, one of the ones I mentioned earlier. The Sustainable Communities Tax Credit has helped rehabilitate about forty-four hundred historic buildings and create some twenty-five thousand jobs since nineteen ninety-six. Welcome, Adam. There's there's our counsel. I introduced him earlier. We were told business casual by the secretary, Adam. I guess you just you didn't you didn't hear that? All right. He is. He is. He wants he wants to. Yeah, he wants people to pay attention when he walks in the room. The state's investment of about three hundred fifty million has reached into all of Maryland's twenty-three counties and the city of Baltimore. We're talking about this Sustainable Communities Tax Credit. All right, historic preservation also defines Maryland. The Maryland Historical Trust, which is a part of the Maryland Department of Planning, based out of Crownsville, became part of, well, it became part of us in two thousand five. The trust's mission, which focuses on identification, protection, and enhancement of heritage resources, completes the department's goal to plan for Maryland's future. The trust is responsible for undertaking the survey and documentation of both architectural and archaeological resources. The survey work is done through partnership with local governments and nonprofit organizations. They recently put out, just published their new ten-year preservation plan, and I think it was earlier this spring. I think I'm gonna come back to that, too. Survey documentation, including written reports, photographs, and maps, are included in the Maryland Inventory of Historic Properties, which is made available to the public through online or at the trust offices in Crownsville. As I mentioned, that's where their their headquarters are. The National Register of Historic Places, a program in the National Park Services, is administered by the state and officially recognizes properties for their historic significance. Listing on the National Register is the threshold for most historic preservation financial assistance program. Start. Now we're back to historic resources. We always want to make sure that MHT is represented in these trainings. The trust, the MHT, administers several programs aimed at protecting historic property, so it's not just research. They also have programs for protection as well. MHT's review and compliance program administers review of state and federal undertakings to ensure that Maryland's important historic and archaeological properties will not be adversely affected or destroyed by the actions of federal and state agencies or by entities receiving assistance from those agencies. This regulatory program fulfills federal and state responsibilities under Section one oh six. Many of you might have heard of a Section one oh six review before of the National Historic Preservation Act of nineteen sixty-six. Through consultation with the involved agencies, project sponsors, local governments, and the interested public, MHT assists program users in fulfilling their historic preservation responsibilities and ensures the appropriate stewardship of Maryland's heritage resources. The Historic Preservation Easement Program is the highest form of protection available for any historic archaeological or cultural resource, so similar to a conservation easement per land. MHT receives donations of gift easements and often receives easements as a condition of state and federal grant awards. MHT holds easements on twenty-two historic properties in District forty-five, including Clifton Mansion, right there. MHT also assists local governments in their efforts to to preserve historic properties through historic area zoning ordinances, historic overlays. For example, MHT often works with CHAP, which is Baltimore City's Historic Preservation Commission. MHT is required to update its state historic preservation plan every five years. Sorry, I thought it was ten years. And this is the most recent one, if you are interested. We'd be happy to share that with you. It's just published this spring. Heritage twenty thirty-one's vision is to protect and share Maryland's diverse cultural heritage, fostering a sense of pride, awareness, belonging, and stewardship among our communities while promoting economic vitality, equity, and accessibility, sustainability, educational enrichment, and climate resilience. Okay, I'm gonna turn it back to you because I've been talking here for a little while. So we're continuing to talk about a future of good planning. It's more pictures from Maryland here. So my question to you and Sarah, if you have the microphone, if anybody has something to share, what are some things that planners need to do to ensure a future of good planning in Maryland? This is all kinds of planners. I'm not just talking about professional planners, what you all do, what the citizens do. Ruth has something to share. Is it on?
Oh, okay. Hello, everybody online. All planners need to think ahead. We can't think just about today, but we have to think ahead when we make our decisions and when, you know, when things come before us.
Okay, absolutely. Yeah, you have to. It's not just the things right in front of you right now. You have to look look forward. Anything else planners need to do to ensure a future of good planning? We got we got somebody over here.
I think the the way land use occurs is dynamic and changes, and we always have to adapt. So we have to we have to keep in mind what the protection of the future would look like, but at the same time, we have to allow for things that had never been considered to happen in a controlled way.
Yeah, I mean, we you set a plan, but that doesn't mean that everything's gonna work exactly like that plan for the next ten years, right? You have to be adaptive. All right. Well, we might come back to that question as you continue to learn more and discuss today. Okay, so many of you might be familiar with this location, but if you're not, we'll go through these options. So is it London? Is it Copenhagen? Is it Venice? Or this one? Or this one? Which one is? Eh? Eh?
It said D. Yes, it is Frederick, Maryland. And and our Assistant Secretary probably had a lot to do with this slide, Chuck Boyd. So this this is Frederick, Maryland, Carroll Creek. But you know, it shows you that, you know, there's there's a lot of good examples and best practices in Maryland and you know, it's anyway, we'll continue.
Well, there we go. All right. So now we're gonna get into a little bit of history here. All right, the history of planning. So in nineteen sixteen, New York adopted the first comprehensive zoning regulations to apply citywide, which became model for zoning in the rest of the country. It regulated height, bulk, and use. A lot of things you're probably familiar with in your own zoning ordinances. The Standard Zoning Enabling Act was developed in nineteen twenty-two, which was a model law drafted by the US Department of Commerce. Anybody know who the Secretary of Commerce was in nineteen twenty-two? Definitely heard of him before. Herbert Hoover, future president. So there's a model law drafted by the US Department of Commerce that states could use to delegate zoning authority to jurisdictions. Daniel Burnham is a guy in the bottom right. And hey, AC, welcome. So if there's a there's a certification that planners can get called AICP, American Institute of Certified Planners. And there's a lot of history on it, probably more history than needs to be on that on that exam or that test. And the joke is, if you don't know the answer, you put down Daniel Burnham. Daniel Burnham took a leading role in the creation of master plans for the development of several cities, including Chicago and Washington DC, famously telling planners to make no small plans. He's most known for the Columbia Exhibition in eighteen ninety-three and with a gold white city. That was in Chicago, yes. And then Edmund Bacon, right here on the left, advanced redevelopment in Philadelphia in his long stint as planning director there. Another famous planner. Famous son? Oh, yeah. Is he really? I didn't know that. Interesting. Okay, seven degrees of Kevin Bacon even even gets into planning. Okay, interesting. The plans for big industrial cities at the turn of the twentieth century recommended extensive development and redevelopment and huge infrastructure projects to accommodate their booming populations. It resulted in many iconic achievements and return on investments in the mid. Make sure I'm on the right slide here. Think so. All right. In the mid twentieth century, however, in the name of urban renewal, some big plans resulted in widespread destruction of existing neighborhoods for urban highways and large housing projects, creating many problems that we are still trying to fix today. Every profession has its darker corners, and we will talk about that. Planning is not exempt from that history. So communities, actually, so another question for you all. Communities change. We were talking about being adaptive earlier, and with them, planning needs to change. So what might change in a community that would require a change in a planning focus? If anybody has any thoughts, we have a microphone here.
Population changes, like growths or decreases?
Growth increases or decreases. Probably, yeah, one of the main things you want to plan for. Correct.
Climate change?
Climate change. Okay. Thank you. Got another one over here.
Mixed use.
Mixed use. Okay, so like the desire for mixed use?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yes. Yes, that's something we hear a lot about. All right. Thank you, Sarah. All right. The Chicago Plan Commission was created in nineteen oh nine to implement the Plan of Chicago, often called the Burnham Plan. Hence, the guy we saw earlier. The commission was successful at fostering relationships with politicians of several types and encouraging voters to support its initiatives, reflecting the importance that residents placed on good planning. Between nineteen twelve and nineteen thirty-one, Chicagoans approved eighty-six plan-related bond issues covering some seventeen different projects. So also, when you study the history of planning, a lot of it is in Chicago. A lot of early things were initiated in Chicago, but these are like the big grand plans, as I mentioned earlier, right? Make no small plans and that was in many ways, that was the history of planning for a long time, and we realize the limitations of that, which I'll get into, and the negative consequences of that. Okay, so urban renewal. I brought up the idea earlier, but want to get back to it. So the history of planning is not one of unchecked progress. Following World War Two, planners and civic leaders in cities throughout the country initiated a concept known as urban renewal, which aimed to clear and redevelop what they called slums in the name of civic and economic progress, often with the support of federal funding. Working class and predominantly minority residents lived in these areas, which in many cases were vibrant and culturally rich communities that were simply getting the way of what they called progress as the professionals and power brokers defined it. Little concern was given to the opinions of the existing residents as freeways and large economic development projects destroyed existing communities and displaced millions against their wills. This was Burnham's make no small plans taken to a frightening extreme. This is Jane Jacobs here. I'm not sure if you all familiar with her. She's very famous in the world of planning. She wasn't a trained professional planner, but she pushed back. And she's author of Death and Life of Great American Cities. I definitely recommend reading it if you're interested. It's basically required for all planners if you're going through school. She rose to prominence when Robert Moses, a powerful New York City official, attempted to extend Fifth Avenue directly through Washington Square Park. She organized stiff community-based resistance, and Moses eventually scrapped his plans. In Death and Life, Jacobs contended that cities were complex systems, that they should be filled with people, and that density was good. This is something that planners still focus on to today, and that people and activity on streets provided not only liveliness and vitality to a city, but also provided safety and security through what she termed eyes on the street or natural surveillance. Bottom line, she argued, planning ought to be about people, not buildings, and these remain core principles of modern planning. So getting back to why plan, first and foremost is that so we can guide sustainable and efficient use of our land. It also also helps us figure out how much public infrastructure, water and sewer, roads and schools, we need to support our population. Planning helps us to protect sensitive resource areas like wetlands and forests. Planning is highly interdisciplinary. Many, many, if not most, planners would consider themselves generalists and has as many different areas of focus as the legal profession does. You may disagree, but that's how I describe it to people. When I tell people I'm a planner, they don't know about planning. They always want me to fix their potholes. And I have to tell them that that's not what I do because they don't understand and that there is, I really think there's such a variety in what planners do that it's hard to pin it down into one thing. And planning takes foresight in a long-term planning horizon. All right, the role of planning continued. You need to understand the physical landscape and diverse and dynamic population, gauge the appropriateness of developments and the capacity to fit them into the whole into a whole greater than the sum of its parts, and combine and synthesize different ideas to provide a vision that appeals to residents. So one concept that is comes up in in planning a lot that's difficult to pin down, but I'd be interested in your feedback, is this concept of public interest. Planners work towards the public interest. But we have a diverse public, don't we? So Sarah, if you could use the microphone, what what is it? What does the public interest in the term of planning mean? Even if you, I'm not asking for the comprehensive definition, but maybe a couple of examples. Anybody has any thoughts? I know it's a tough question. Doesn't really have a correct answer. Yes.
I guess like a type of like business that someone would want to see in the area, maybe?
Okay. Okay. Business, commercial activity. All right. We got AC in the back.
What if I if I moved to the country and from the city, and I don't like the smell of all those cows and pigs?
Is that the public interest? That's AC's interests, I think. Well, I I mean, you bring up a good point here, right, that? And and so do you, like, the the idea we're trying to get at here is like, public interest isn't easy to define because the interest of the different members of the public often conflict. So AC might wanted to move out of the country because he wanted more land, wanted a quieter lifestyle. But he's moving into an agricultural area where there's working farms, working landscapes. People have been there a long time, right? He has an interest to avoid the smell, but they have an interest to continue their business, continue their livelihood, and everybody else has an interest in getting the food that they produce or the. so in, in the same thing for commercial activity. Some members of a community might really want the new restaurants or the new shops and others may think that it's changing their, their, their community in a way that they don't like or they don't appreciate. And that these are the difficult questions that you need to navigate. NIMBYism, okay. Does anybody know what NIMBY stands for? I know you do, Ruth. It's an acronym.
We need prizes to give out.
We did. I do. I'll remember prizes next time. So I'll let you tell us, or at least what it stands for. ISM, yes. Not in my backyard ISM. Yes, go ahead, tell us.
NIMBYism is, or NIMBY stands for not in my backyard. So it's when people, it's, they're, they're basing their, 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 their concerns based upon their feelings. Sometimes they're not taking the whole community and, you know, or the future of the community in, in mind. They're just thinking about, you know, I don't want cows in my backyard or I don't want, what's the, not racquetball, what's the thing?
Pickleball?
Pickleball, pickleball is a big thing right now. Pickleball's noisy, so a lot of people don't like them now in parks. They're noisier than tennis, you know, anyway. So you get all these, you know, different things or, or, or say all of a sudden they're, you know, you live in a one, what depends on what your zoning is, but say you've always had one-story houses in the area and now people are building two-story houses and that gets people upset. So then, you know, you get these community activists out there and sometimes they're called NIMBYs. But sometimes, I mean, in the, in the case of Jane Jacobs, you know, that was, she did produce good change. So you do have to listen to everybody and weigh it out to see, you know, what is the best thing for the community. So that's why you do want to hear everybody's voices.
No.
Right. But sometimes you have to think, oh, well, is this just about them or is this, you know, for the greater good? I don't.
Yeah, you're right. No, that's a good, that's a good, probably better than I could have explained it in the amount of time that you, you explained it. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's good to bring up Jane Jacobs as well, right? NIMBYism tends to have a very negative connotation. You know, oh, you're just a NIMBY, you don't want anything, it's all about you. But, you know, in some instances like Jane Jacobs or really harmful uses or developments, you know, it might, could be a potentially positive force. All right. But, so, planning has not always been a positive force in America, you know, kind of bouncing back and forth between the positive and the, and the negative here. So go, going back even farther than urban renewal and with the support of New Deal policies, planning and planners also contributed to racial segregation and social injustice. In the 30s, the Federal Home Owners Loan Corporation created residential security or red line maps of major American cities. Here's Baltimore had one of the first ones, if not the first one. You can see, yeah, there's Baltimore. So those areas shown in red, which were predominantly African-American neighborhoods, were labeled hazardous and therefore mortgage lenders and appraisers denied services, loans and capital investment within the red line. The New Deal's Federal Housing Administration denied minority households access to the federally backed guaranteed mortgage loans created through the National Housing Act of 1934. A comparison of this map, 1937, to a map of poor economic and health indicators in Baltimore today reveals a striking overlap. So you can see that continuation there, right? You know, building generational wealth often goes through housing. Essentially, the refusal of the federal government to provide the same housing, finance benefits to families of color with the support of local leaders significantly contributed to today's wealth gap and we're still seeing the, the consequences of that. But there are also other examples of local planning for inequity riddled throughout our history. Restrictive covenants preventing black families from purchasing homes within certain neighborhoods strengthened de facto residential segregation, even when legal discrimination was being dismantled. An exclusionary zoning, which limits the supply of and access to affordable housing through minimum lot sizes and single residence per lot requirements, minimum square footage requirements and other zoning restrictions drove up the price of housing. This has similarly exacerbated residential segregation and concentrated poverty in America. And finally, budgets demonstrate priorities and far too often, American jurisdictions have prioritized capital investment such as that for infrastructure, recreational uses and community facilities in wealthier neighborhoods at the expense of the rest. But there's also planning for equity, all right? This is a bigger and bigger focus of planning. It's not new, but it's, it's much more common now and, and urgent. The first step to our planning for equity is acknowledging the sometimes ugly history of planning. And even if current staff and officials did not contribute to its history, they, they serve in positions representing it and sometimes need to go out of their way to overcome a legacy of dish trust that is often well deserved. Planners planning for equity need to be as deliberate in their approach as those who are planning for inequity in years past. This may lead to discomfort, but it is a vital part of the process and we need to listen more than explain. Planning for equity requires that everyone, particularly those historically and currently underserved, participate authentically in the planning process. Baltimore, some examples are Baltimore City and Howard County's planning academies that build community education and leadership around planning and zoning issues using a localized approach. So here, you know, this training is for appointed board members of planning commissioners. But there's also training, particularly in these local communities, for just people that are interested in planning in their neighborhoods that live in the, in the community and aren't officially appointed. Also, planning organizations need to look internally when planning for equity. Do we look like and represent the stakeholders we are supposed to serve? Do we embody equity within our own organization? This is very important. And we could, I'll own up to it too. Look, who are the three people training you today? Right? It's me, Adam and Chuck. We're white men, right? So, you know, this is something we, it can be, it can be uncomfortable. It's something we all need to look at. Equity lenses are tools used in the planning decision-making process, including resource allocation that can lead to more racially and economically equitable policies and programs. We traditionally analyze development proposals through the lens of their impacts on transportation infrastructure and public facilities such as schools. But why not consider equity? Capital investment can be consciously directed to underserved communities. I want to point out Sherry Ornstein's Letter of Public Participation here. This is another classic thing that we learn in planning school. Going from, because we can, planners, professional citizen otherwise, can always engage their community, but there are different ways to do it, right? You say you're doing it and it goes from manipulation where you're kind of just, it's just, you're pretending to do it all the way up to, to full citizen control. So it's good to think about how our, our public engagement is actually empowering the people in our communities. All right. I'm a little behind here, so I'm going to skip this Q and A and save it for the end. I'm sorry, Adam, I'm pushing you back a little bit. I always tend to talk and ask too many questions. All right. But we'll have time for Q and A at the end of my section. So let's look at Maryland specifically and Maryland statutes. Adam will get more into this about as, as well. So the state of Maryland has the authority for planning and zoning. So actually, the authority for planning zoning resides in the state. However, it delegates this authority to counties and municipalities. And it does this through enabling legislation that we're going to hear about a lot today. Basics are, it enables charter counties, and we'll look at a map of what those are later, to enact local planning and zoning laws. It enables non-charter counties as well as Montgomery and Prince George's Counties, which are their own unique thing, in specific areas such as required and has optional elements for comprehensive plans. Former Article 28 created the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, MNC PPC, for Montgomery and Prince George's Counties to implement planning, zoning and subdivision. You know, their, their proximity to the, the Capitol to necessitate the state to take a different approach with them. Other planning-related state legislation includes things like water and sewer planning, smart growth policies, stormwater management, forest conservation, wetlands, both title and non-title, endangered species and flood plain management, and the list goes on and on. All right. A new land use article was enacted into law during the 2012 General Assembly Session. A lot of the stuff that was in the old 66B was just transferred over. It has a lot of specific provisions, some by county, by types of county, and one size doesn't fit all in the land use article. And there are two main divisions, one, Division One, for being everything but Prince George's County, Montgomery County, and Division Two is Montgomery County and Prince George's. In 2013, the Maryland General Assembly repealed old Articles 23A, 24, 25, 25A and 25B, replaced them with a local government article. Don't worry, don't remember those numbers. But I just wanted to give you a sense. So if you see some documents out there, we still have some documents in Maryland Department of Planning that reference these old code references. They're now on the land use article, local government article. So here are charter or code counties versus non-charter counties. The green ones are charter or code. They have, they have different comprehensive plan requirements than non-charter counties and they have a council form of government, whereas the blue counties are non-charter counties and they have a commissioner form of government. And if you're looking at the land use article, there's a lot more similarities between, I mean, non, at least when it comes to comprehensive plan requirements between non-charter counties and municipalities than there are between non-charter counties and charter counties. We'll get more into that later when we talk about comp plans. All right. So here's some planning milestones. So planning goes all the way back to the earliest days of, you know, the American colonies. Plans resulted in some great places such as Central Park pictured here. And law and legislation played a huge part in planning as well. Euclid versus Amber Realty, 1926. I know Adam will get a lot more detail of that. You might have heard the term Euclidian zoning. It's not about math, it's about that case. That's where it comes from. The RPA or Regional Planning Association grew out of an effort of business professional and civic leaders to plan for the New York City metropolitan region instead of just New York City alone. So this extends beyond just the city and we'll talk about regional planning. But the Housing Act of 1937 is a big one as well. Formerly the United States, United States Housing Act of 1937 provided for subsidies to be paid from the US government to local public housing agencies to improve living conditions for low-income families. And then finally, the National Environmental Policy Act. This created, you might have heard NEPA, NEPA Studies, Environmental Impact Statements, or EISs. At the federal level here, is at the state level. We've always been considered, Maryland's always been considered a leader in planning. During the Great Depression, the General Assembly created the State Planning Commission to help coordinate public works programs coming out of the New Deal. The State Planning Office, which is where we are now, Maryland Department of Planning, was founded in 1959. The Economic Growth Resource Protection and Planning Act was enacted in 1992 and established state growth, growth policies and visions. We'll get back to those. In 1997, the Smart Growth Areas Act established the priority funding areas. We'll talk more about those. And then 2010, the Sustainable Communities Act was passed, which combined several state incentive programs into one. All right. Real briefly about priority funding areas, we're going to talk about it more later. These are areas designated where both local and state government have agreed that we want to see growth and spending related to growth. It designate, it directs state infrastructure spending into these areas and the law restricts public expenditures, expenditures outside of PFAs. This helps preserve farmland, open space and natural resources. We talked about that a little bit earlier by concentrating spending in, in more central areas. PFA designations are identified by the local government and then reviewed by the state. A lot of people think that PFAs are created by the state, but that's, it's, it's the other way around. But also, going back to 1997, it's a key year when that law went to effect. So all incorporated municipalities in 1997 were PFAs. Chuck is going to talk a lot more about these. Here are some criteria for them. If you want to designate a new PFA, they need to have existing or planned water and sewer service, an average density of 3.5 units per acre. All right. So we're, we're talk, go back to talking about Jane Jacobs, talking about density is good. You know, the state wants to focus its growth-related funding in areas where there is density, where, you know, it can, it'll have the biggest impact and it'll be the sufficient use of funds. Growth plans need to be consistent with projections and the size of the PFA should be based on land needed for 20 years. Real quickly here, so this is showing resident, percent residential parcels and acres by PFA from, developed from 1998 to 2018. This, this green doesn't show very well here. So you'll see here that the number of parcels, so this is P, orange is PFA, green is outside of PFA. So in those 20 years, 71.9% of parcels, let me, I'll get to your question, were developed inside the PFA. If we're talking about just acres, 74.9% of acres in that 20-year period were developed outside of PFA. So why is that so different? The density, right? These, the parcels inside of PFAs are much smaller. Right? So there's a lot more of them, so that just the quantity of parcels is much higher here. You have larger parcels outside the PFA. We looked back at that density requirement, so it makes sense. So these, so the acreage has been developed more outside, but the actual number of parcels is much greater inside. Sam, do you have any questions about this? Ah, commentary, yes. So priority funding area law says that when the requirements in this state financing procurement article, if a jurisdiction, county, municipality wants to designate an area as a PFA, they designate it locally, then they need to send it to us, the Maryland Department of Planning, and we like concur with it. We call it certification. If it does not meet one of those requirements, back on this plan, it's in a growth area, primarily is a growth area, density or, and existing or planned water and sewer service. If it's zoned for employment, like commercial, industrial, that's, that meets the zoning requirements. If it's been designated locally, but it doesn't meet one of those requirements, the law says that this Maryland Department of Planning can comment on it. So this is kind of a term that the Maryland Department of Planning came up with, a PFA comment area, meaning it has been designated locally, but the state does not concur because it doesn't meet one of those requirements. And therefore, it, from the state perspective, it's not a PFA. So that means transportation, housing, water and sewer funding that is restricted by the PFA law would not be able to go to the PFA common area. Yeah, but we still want to point those out like on our maps and our communications that these have been designated locally. There's a reason why it's not. You know, the idea is that let's work towards getting a PFA if that's what you want. That's what a common area are. But you'll see it's not nearly as common as other ones. All right. So let me try to wrap this up so we can get to Adam. So we're talking about the future here, right? We expect to see about 600,000 new jobs in Maryland by 2040. However, if land use trends continue as they are, many of these jobs could be located outside of established older communities, which could have a detrimental effect on existing commercial centers, right? But it also have a detrimental effect on those natural or working landscapes we were talking about earlier. Part of the, part of the reason Maryland communities need strong local planning is that maintaining past trends and growth patterns for the state will have cost implications as well as an impact on our quality of life. Take past land development patterns, for example. Over the past 30 years, 650,000 acres of land have been developed. To put that into context, it took 300 years to develop the first 650 acres in the state. So growth has been exponential in many respects. So really have to focus on it. From, from 2009 to 2018, data shows that we've used only about 50,000 acres for residential development. Most of the residential development, 75% is inside PFAs. If you look at a map of PFAs and compare it to 95, there are PFAs all over the state, but you'll see the concentration of PFAs in the state are basically follow 95 as the spine through that. And that makes sense, right? Transportation, infrastructure tends to, you know, it'd be an impetus for growth and development. So, all right, compared to 10 years prior, 1999 to 2008, where about 157,000 acres was used for residential development and where 70% of development occurred in PFAs. So you know, we're, we, this is something we track at the Maryland Department of Planning, how much development is happening inside and outside of PFAs. And we think we're on the right track, but we also work with locals to try to really focus that growth. All right. I am done with this first, we got a review here. That's right. I forgot about the reviews.
Joe?
Yeah, Chuck.
We do have a couple of questions in the audience, so I want to give them an opportunity to be as interactive as, as possible. So I, I have two questions, actually both from John Brown. The first one is how do towns which are independent from the county in which they are located fit in with the overall planning and reporting process of the county? And are the reporting requirements for the town the same as the county that they're locate, located in? And if not, why not? I'll, I'll let you chew on that for a second if you want to. Since you're the one that, that deals a lot with the reporting requirements in your, in your division, what, can you explain a little bit about the reporting differences between the towns and a county?
Sure. Well, so there's this thing called a local, there's a lot of different reports out there and you know, some, you're going to have to report certain things to DNR, to MDE. I, I just focus on what we have for the Maryland Department of Planning. And is that, so there's this thing called a local government annual report that all jurisdictions have planning zoning authority. Because there are some municipalities out there that don't have planning and zoning authority. So that all jurisdictions have it at the county or municipal level, need to submit a report by July 1st of every year, reporting their certain metrics, other policy changes, progress, permits, residential permits and others in the previous calendar year. So the reason there's that six-month delay is because Maryland's fiscal year, the state of Maryland's fiscal year is July 1st to June 30th. So we were, the, So we were, the requirement is that by, so six months after the end of the calendar year, so by July first. You submit this annual report to Maryland. We've created templates on our website. The, the requirements are different if you have fifty residential permits or more or less than that, right? Because a jurisdiction that has less than fifty residential permits, it's a smaller jurisdiction, slower growth, the reporting requirements are less. And then those fifty are more higher. And this is for both counties or municipalities. Now, those, those reporting requirements are just, so the county will have its own, the municipality will have its own. But there's some more open-ended questions in there, like did you have any? I can't remember them all right now, but like any change in policies? Where those change in policies, or maybe you had some coordination with the county on transportation, housing or other issues, you could report those in there. So we would encourage counties and municipalities to work together on their, on their reports. Talk about if they're growing in concert or if they're planning in concert, but really those reports are distinct.
Joe? Yeah, yeah, just real, real quick. Just, it's important to point out to folks, there is certain plans such as a water and sewer plan and the county. Which is led by the county and the land preservation recreation plan also led by the county reported to DNR. The water and sewer plan is approved by MDE. It's important that municipalities be an active participant, working with the counties in the preparation of those plans. So that they get their fair share of funding through POS funding, for example. And to ensure that they are able to have their water and sewer plans be updated in a timely manner. So that that can support local growth. So there are some type of reporting and coordination efforts on certain planning efforts. That require municipalities to work closely with the county. So I, I, I think you've covered that. And the other one, maybe just real quickly. Is if planning and zoning is delegated to the local governments by the state. Then why does the state dictate limits, restrictions on those localities? I will start this one by saying we do not at the state restrict. Now, as Joe pointed out, the PFA law, there is at times when state, local governments want state funding. For example, water and sewer, you don't necessarily, much of the water and sewer extensions and services are funded by the private developer. That means that they don't require state funding. So there is often a case where. Water and sewer service is extended beyond the PFA. But in cases, if they want the state to assist with that growth. We, we do have standards in terms of the densities along the way to try to encourage more compact development. To be more efficient use of state dollars. So there are times that the state will encourage locals. But the, that's a choice of the local governments if they want the state funding or not. So. I, I'll turn it back to you. Now you can go on to your questions and, and we'll, we'll move forward from here. Thank you.
Yeah, so there, like Chuck said, oftentimes the stable setup like incentive, like if, you know, if you want access to this funding. You know, there's certain guardrails. Now, and then there's certain areas where the General Assembly has decided that the, the need is so strong that they do take a, a little bit stronger hand, like critical areas. Going back to the eighties where there is state oversight on what the zoning can be in critical areas. So there are certain instances, but. Planning and zoning is still, for the most part, delegated locally and just influenced by the state. All right, so some. Follow-up questions, then I'll turn it over to Adam. So Maryland is, is this true or false? Maryland is the fifth, fifth most densely populated state? All right, how many, or, sorry, Maryland expected to grow by. I don't think I went over all these numbers, but. I'll give you a hint. If it's all, if you see all the above, that's the answer. I think, I think that's the case. I think it's the case, everything that's, if you see all the above, that's the answer. So why do we plan? All the above. All right, this one's, I only got one answer. Where do Maryland jurisdictions get their planning authority? The land use article, correct? Priority funding areas? So B, A, so they're, they do, they're, they are designed to make the most efficient use of taxpayer dollars. They're actually located inside growth areas. They are drawn or crafted designated by locally and just concurred with by the state. And they are not only municipalities, municipalities and counties. All right, any other questions before I turn over to Adam? Both in the room or online? All right, hold on, hold on for the microphone, if you don't mind.
Yeah, even though we're a smaller group, the reason why we're using the microphone is because online can only hear us with the mic.
Maybe for a, for a future comment, you don't have to respond now, but one thing, so I'm from Salisbury, Wycomico County. We have a number of areas that are impacted by rising sea level. And that turns into water and sewer issues for people on private well and septic. They're located outside of PFAs. We have a, a plan in place. We just started about. Maybe two years ago to establish a Wycomico. Sanitary commission to extend services to those areas. But this issue of, of, of PFA is getting in the way of funding, quite frankly. So, so love to chat more about that, but, but it's, it's a consideration for. You know, get the idea about keeping density under control. We don't want to have sprawl by any means. But at the same time, we need to be able to address a clear and present issue that we have as a community right now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with your share. You know Tracy Taylor?
Yes, Tracy Gordy.
She is, she's recently married, Tracy Taylor. Yes, Tracy Gordy. She's our director of the Lower Eastern Shore office, has been down there for years and. Whiz and all this stuff. She's great. But yes, so there's a couple, couple situations, things here. So there's things called PFA exceptions. That I believe Wycomico has gone through a few where there, like there's the PFA law which limits state growth-related funding. But the, the General Assembly recognized the fact that there are certain situations where you can't shut every, all state growth-related funding down just because it's not in a PFA. And they call them PFA exceptions. The most common one we see is for water and sewer, failing septics, failing wells. And if there is an issue of public health and safety. The PFA exception is approved by the Sustainable Growth Coordinating Committee. It's a staff level. You know, we, we would need the health department to say the septic is actually failing, the whale is, the well is, is contaminated or will be contaminated. We get that documentation. They, they'll usually approve a bypass of the PFA. Spending restriction for that situation. So MDE has this thing called Bay Restoration Funding, which is usually used to. Convert, or often used to convert septics to connections to sewer. They try to encourage when they can, if it's just like a faulty septic system. I'm not an expert on, on septic systems. So if I use the wrong term, please forgive me, to like the best, best available technology to just a BAT system to try to improve it. But if not, they'll, they'll connect it. Something else, and, and keep in mind also that PFA only limits state growth-related funding. So if there's other local funding that was going to go or regional funding that was going to go to pay for those connections, the PFA law doesn't restrict it. We encourage any, because when we review water and sewer plans, they're sent to us by the Maryland Department of Environment. We review them for consistency with comprehensive plans. That could be the county or municipal comprehensive plan, depending on where the specific amendment is proposed. If, we encourage comprehensive plans in communities that, and I think Wycomico will be updating this comprehensive plan relatively soon. To have some policies in there that's like, all right, here's where we want sewer to go. And usually those are going to be in growth areas. But in situations where a septic is failing or a well is contaminated. We, our comprehensive plan supports connecting those, those areas to sewer system. So then when we're reviewing the water and sewer plan, we can find consistency. And we can communicate that to MDE, that they have thought, the county has thought about this. They recognize the issue. They put it in their comprehensive plan and it's therefore supported. So they're, they're, but happy to talk to you more about it. I know Tracy's well on top of what is going on in Wycomico. I know that. You're welcome. All right, I know I went over my time. But I'll be back for you all to ask questions and pick on if you'd like when we get back to comprehensive plans. But I'm gonna turn it over to Adam Snyder and this is the fun part of the, the training.
So he says. Can you hear me all right through the system?
And this is.
All right. Okay, we're gonna. Cover an awful lot of ground here. It's going to be like an hour and a half or more. So buckle up. We're going to move quickly. We're going to start by talking about legal authority for planning and zoning. Then we're going to talk about the constitutional limitations on planning and zoning, takings law, exactions law, equal protection law. Then we'll talk about planning and zoning in Maryland. What are the sources of planning and zoning authority for counties and municipalities? And some of the general principles of planning and zoning law, things about comprehensive plans and comprehensive rezoning. Variances and what have you, just kind of an introduction to some of those concepts. And then we're going to finish up by talking briefly about the ethics rules that apply to public employees in Maryland. So Joe mentioned the city of Euclid, Ohio, which is famous not only for being the home of the Polka Hall of Fame. But also the birthplace of planning and zoning in the United States. So the village of Euclid in the nineteen twenties, Euclid, Ohio, passed a zoning ordinance dividing the village up into different areas. Residential areas, industrial areas, what have you. The Ambler Realty Company owned land throughout the, the town, some of which was now in a real, a, a residential area. Some was in a commercial area, but they wanted to develop it for industrial purposes. And they said, well, hey, you can't tell me what I can do with my property. I wanted to develop this for, for industry and now you're telling me I can only use it for residential use. So they sued and claimed that the, the planning and zoning was unconstitutional. Lower courts. Agreed with the plaintiff. The Supreme Court reversed. It held that the, that the town's exercise of planning and zoning and power was a reasonable use of its police power. That government has the ability to regulate in the public welfare and in the public interest. And planning and zoning by itself is consistent with that. It doesn't violate the Constitution. But the court was clear that it was not talking about the property-specific application of planning and zoning authority. It was just talking about planning and zoning more generally. And it is where planning and zoning gets applied to specific properties is where the constitutional problems arise. And it arises under the Fifth Amendment. Now, the Fifth Amendment takings clause reads, as it says there, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation. That's twelve words in the Constitution. Pretty much every single one of them has generated hundreds of court decisions. We're not going to talk about what constitutes a public use. We're not going to talk about what constitutes just compensation. We're going to focus on what constitutes a taking, because that's the thing that you all need to know as you go about doing the work you do. So what is a taking? Now, there are three forms of takings. There's eminent domain. There's regulatory takings and certain types of exactions. Now eminent domain, you're familiar with. This is where, you know, the State Highway Administration comes in and says, we want to put a highway through your backyard. The government can do that. They just have to condemn your property and pay you just compensation for your land. Now that type of. Straightforward overt exercise of eminent, eminent domain power is probably not something that you will deal with very much. Again, that's for Departments of Public Works, highway builders and that sort of thing. You're going to have to be dealing with the concept of regulatory takings. Now regulatory takings, as the name suggests, is where the government, though it doesn't exercise eminent domain explicitly. Regulates property to such a degree that it has effectively taken the property. The hard part here though is how do you determine? When government regulation has gone so far as to effectively take someone's property? Pretty much all government regulation affects property values. So if, you know, stricter Clean Air Act requirements is going to reduce the value of coal. Because it's less usable as a, a fuel source. So government, whenever it regulates, it's going to be affecting the, the, the value of property. How do you distinguish that normal variation in property values and result, as a result of normal government regulation? And circumstances where it goes too far. Now, the Supreme Court has developed a few different tests for how to do that. The first is the Penn Central Takings Test. This case was nineteen seventy eight. It arose when. The, a developer proposed to build a skyscraper on top of Grand Central Station in Manhattan. The New York City Historic Preservation Agency rejected the application. Now that obviously has an effect on the value of that property. That went from going to have a big office on top of the station to not have, having that. The court recognized, the Supreme Court recognized that there are no bright, bright line rules as to what constitutes regulatory taking and what doesn't. So instead, they developed a ad hoc multi-factor test. That courts should use to determine whether something constitutes a taking. So you look at the economic effect of the governmental action. What does it mean for the person who owns the property? Can they still make use of their property in some way? Look at the impact on reasonable investment-backed expectations. Did the owner buy the property knowing that this historic preservation restriction was in place? And so they paid a discounted purchase price? What is the character of the government action? Does it look like the government's trying to tell the person that they have to preserve their property as essentially a park? Or something like that, that would be open to the public or at least provide public values? Or is it more just generally applicable economic regulation? Now, the problem with this is, and with, the problem with all ad hoc multi-factor tests is that there is no bright line. It is, it is virtually impossible to tell. Whether a particular case will fail this test or not. It's just rough guidelines for courts to use to work through these difficult issues. But that, that lack, that, the court likes bright line rules. And so subsequent to Penn Cent, the Penn Central case, they started to develop a few. The first is the concept of physical takings. Now this arose from the Loretto versus Teleprompter case. And it involved a New York City ordinance that required the owners of apartment buildings. To install like a three foot by three foot cable box on the side of their apartment buildings. The idea was that all of those boxes would be connected and all of Manhattan would be then wired for cable. Now, if you look at the Penn Central test, the first thing was, what is the, what is the economic effect? Well, the economic effect of putting a three foot square metal box on the side of an apartment building is zero. And yet the court determined that this was a taking. And it created this new rule that when the government physically occupies your property. It is a taking. It doesn't matter what the economic impact is. It doesn't matter what your investment back to expectations is. If the government occupies it or authorizes someone else to occupy it, that is a taking. The next one that the court developed in nineteen ninety two is the Lucas style total takings. And this is the one you probably need to know most about. The case arose from the South, South Carolina management, beach management ordinance. That essentially drew a line in the sand along the, I guess it's the Atlantic Ocean there. And said you could not build. waterward of that line. Mr. Lucas owned a lot that was waterward of that line. And so he went from having a beachfront, oceanfront lot that was worth a lot of money to something that he could really only maybe camp on or put up a parasol and a beach chair and sun himself. The court found that that was a taking too, and in so doing, it creates a new categorical taking for regulations that deny a landowner of all economically viable use. You'll, that's a kind of a catchphrase, a catchphrase in the takings world, denial of all economically viable use. Because most takings plaintiffs, when they're objecting to planning and zoning regulations and how they impact their land, will try to get in this box. Now, it's still difficult to get into this box because the per se taking only applies when you truly are depriving a landowner of all economically viable use. If you can still make use of your property, but just in a less economically profitable way, that's not gonna get you in this box. It has to really be you're being forced to leave the land idle. Also, diminution of value is not enough on its own, unless it's like really, really high, northwards of like 95%. If that's the case, so you maybe you still are using the property for a residence or something, but you are being deprived of 98% of the value as a result of an ordinance, maybe you can get into that. But usually, this box is for property that is being forced to lie idle. Now, that's again, difficult box to get into, and so sometimes plaintiffs will try to get around it by divvying up their parcels. So let's say you own a hundred acre parcel of land and a 20-acre corner of it is wetlands. And the government says, nah, you can't develop in that wetland area. You can develop in the other 80 acres, but you can't develop in the wetland area. And the person, the landowner brings a takings challenge saying, hey, I'm, you're telling me I can't use that 20, that 20 acres of my land, and I can't do anything with it. It's being forced to sit idle. That doesn't constitute a taking because takings jurisprudence looks at the parcel as a whole. So in that circumstance, you look at what is the effect on the 100-acre parcel of land? You don't look at just the effect on the 20 acres that are affected by the regulation. And this applies to not only physical efforts to physically divide the land, it also applies to temporal divisions. So like development moratoria generally do not constitute a taking if they're for a defined time period. If it's just an open-ended moratorium, that gets dicier, but if you, if a local jurisdiction says for five years, there's gonna be no new development as we sort out our water and sewer system or whatever, that's not gonna be a taking. All right. Let's talk a little bit about exactions, and this is kind of a hot topic these days because there's been some developments in this realm. So an exaction is is a affirmative condition placed on the receipt of a permit, special exception, or other action applicable to a specific property, and under certain conditions can constitute a taking. The two tests for determining whether a an exaction is constitutional is whether the exaction bears an essential nexus to the problem that the government is trying to solve here, and that it is roughly proportional to the individual property's impact or contribution to that problem. So the first test, the essential nexus test arises from the Nolan versus California Coastal Commission case. The Nolans applied for a permit to enlarge their waterfront house. And the Coastal Commission was concerned that the people walking in front of the house on the road in front of their house wouldn't be able to see the ocean anymore if these people were allowed to enlarge their house. And so the commission said, we'll give you a permit, but on the condition that you grant the public an easement to cross your privately-owned beach behind the house. And the Supreme Court said, no, that's unconstitutional. It might be okay to allow the, to require the owner to provide an easement for the public to walk on their property to the side of their house to be able to see the beach, because that's the problem the government was citing as the reason for this condition, blocking the public's view of the beach. But giving the public access across a privately-held beach behind the house really doesn't have anything to do with that. And that's one of the things that lies behind this whole exactions jurisprudence, is trying to ferret out situations where the government is using the the owner's need to get a permit to try to extract concessions from them. This part of the test says, you can do that, but it's only when that concession that you're trying to exact has an essential nexus to the problem that is being created by the person's application. Think I've just gone over that. The next way of, the next test for whether an exaction is constitutional is whether there is rough proportionality in nature and degree between the impacts of a proposed development and the impact-related exactions imposed as a condition of approval. So this came out of the Dolan case. The first one was the Nolan case. This is the Dolan case. You'll hear Nolan Dolan if you ever weighed into this area of the law. The Dolan was, the Dolans owned a hardware store, I believe, that they wanted to expand, and it was in a floodplain, and it was going to affect stormwater-carrying capacity of the area. So the government said, okay, we'll give you the, a permit if you first install stormwater mitigation measures on the property to mitigate the impact of your development. And if you donate to the city land elsewhere in the watershed that can then be used as a way to capture stormwater. Now, the Supreme Court struck that down, saying that that's just too much. The the property's impact on stormwater-carrying capacity was addressed by the site-specific mitigation measures. That was established as part of the case. This other requirement that you deed over to the city other land to be used for stormwater management, it's all related to stormwater management. So it does have an essential nexus to what the city was trying to protect. But because it went well beyond what the individual development project, its impact on stormwater management, the court said that it was inappropriate. Now, together, these two types of exactions are referred to as the Nolan-Dolan takings, and for many years, there was disagreement among courts as to whether this applied, that test, the Nolan-Dolan test, applied only to administratively-imposed exactions, a permit writer imposing a condition on a particular permit. Or does it also apply to legislatively-imposed conditions? An ordinance that says, if you are going to build a residence in this area, you have to pay a traffic management impact fee determined by a formula layout in this, laid out in the statute. In Maryland, Maryland courts were on the side that, no, the Nolan-Dolan test does not apply to legislatively-imposed impact fees or legislatively-imposed exactions of any form. It only applies to administratively-imposed fees. The idea being the legislature passes laws for all sorts of reasons. That's evaluated by other legal standards. The exactions takings test is focused on when a permit writer has gone amok. They're trying, they're they're misusing their power in a way to exact concessions from a property owner. So Maryland said, nah, legislatively-imposed things are not subject to Nolan-Dolan. Well, that changed in April of this year, when the Supreme Court said, yes, they actually are subject to the Nolan and Dolan test. Now, Sheets involved a county ordinance that required all new development, pay a traffic impact fee based on the type of development and its location within the county. Based on a statutory formula, the county required Mr. Sheets to pay $23,000-some dollars in a, in a impact fee to obtain a building permit for his small prefabricated house. Mr. Sheets challenged the fee, claiming it violated the Nolan-Dolan test, because the county had failed to establish that the fee was tailored specifically to his property. It didn't reflect his property's specific impact on traffic congestion. It was just a generally applicable impact fee, and that that violated the Nolan-Dolan test. The lower court said, you're barking up the wrong tree. Nolan test doesn't even apply to legislatively-imposed exactions. Go home, you lose. He challenged, went to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court said unanimously rejects the lower court's conclusion that the Nolan-Dolan test does not apply to legislatively-imposed impact fees. Now, the unanimously bit here is kind of important because the Supreme Court tends to, on takings cases, tends to break on ideological lines. To get all nine of them agreeing on a principle that has takings implications is very rare. So this decision, when it came out, triggered a lot of hand wringing about legis, you know, county, town, state legislation that imposes impact fees based on schedules that are laid out in the statute. The question immediately emerges, how specific do those schedules have to be? How how many factors have to be laid out in a statute in order to make the resulting fee tailored enough to a specific property to survive the Nolan-Dolan test? And a lot of commentators were concerned that it was just gonna completely obliterate legislatively enacted impact fees. But importantly, the court, though it was unanimous in saying that the Dolan, Nolan-Dolan test applies, specifically left open the question of whether a permit condition imposed on a class of properties must be tailored with the same degree of specificity as a permit condition that targets a particular development. Now, that's important because they're saying, we recognize that it's difficult to tailor legislation to specific properties. That's not what legislation does. Legislation legislates on a broad basis. It's the administrative process that tailors it to specific properties. And the court was saying, we're not, we're just saying that the Nolan-Dolan test applies here. We're not saying how it applies and whether it would obliterate all legislatively-imposed impact fees. Now, three of the justices indicated that they thought it would obliterate legislatively-imposed impact fees. Four of them said, no, they didn't think it would. You'd think that the legislature would have to do some tailoring, but, you know, they would generally survive. And two of them didn't, didn't take a position because they didn't have to. That just, the majority opinion says, we're not addressing that issue. Now, what that means is there's gonna be an avalanche of litigation on that specific issue that the Supreme Court is going to let happen, percolate, see what tests emerge from that whole judicial melee, and then eventually they'll probably take one of those cases and say, yeah, that test, we like that one. And they'll, they'll pick the one that they think is the best way of addressing that issue. But for now, just know that your legislature can enact impact fees and other broadly applicable exactions, that they're not per se unconstitutional. But know that you're skating, you're skating on some thin ice here, and there's going to be some changes in the law in the next decade. All right, I'm switching gears a little bit to the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment. Nor shall any state deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws. This is the funny thing about constitutions. They have these very short, terse provisions that then through court decisions just get exploded into a whole books and pon books of jurisprudence on what those words mean. So generally speaking, what the 14th Amendment means is that similarly situated people or properties must be treated similarly. It was the basis for the Brown v. Board of Education decision back in 1954 that required desegregation of public schools. The now, what, the way it works in practice is if the legislature is drawing distinctions without, but let me back it up. Let me say it another way. If the legislature discriminates on the basis of a suspect class, such as race, national origin, ancestry, or by fundamental rights, Democrats, a law applies differently to Democrats as it does to Republicans, which would impose, which would discriminate on the basis of First Amendment rights. Then the government essentially loses because in order to have that type of classification upheld, you have to show that it is narrowly tailored to serve a compelling government interest, and the government almost never satisfies that test. Very difficult. But if you're not discriminating on the basis of a suspect class or fundamental rights, then it's generally permitted so long as it has a rational basis. And that's important for you all because land use is all about discriminating. It's all about discriminating between properties that are zoned residential and properties that are zoned commercial or zoned industrial. That's okay, as long as there's a rational basis for the distinction. And when those types of uses have different impacts on the surrounding community, that's gonna be a rational basis. So the takeaway there is, you're okay under equal protection is not an obstacle to land use, planning and zoning only is a problem when you really, when you start to discriminate on these kind of hot-button issues. I think we're now breaking for a round of questions. One word about questions. I have to leave like as soon as I'm done talking. So get your questions out now. There's a couple other breaks during my talk, so you'll have a couple of other opportunities. But get them out now. The other caveat is try to keep your questions general. Oftentimes, I'll talk and then someone will raise their hand, and they'll have a very, very specific question that is kind of obviously something they're actually working on at the moment. That's for your county attorney or for your town attorney. I can't give you legal advice, but if you have questions about my presentation, happy to answer.
Adam, while you're, while you're getting the first questions there, we have one that was put before, and it talks about just generally the critical area regulations and any thoughts you have on how it avoids or addresses the takings issue with regard to Maryland's critical area of regulations?
Well, I can't say I'm an expert on critical area regulations, but I Well, I, I can't say I'm an expert on, um, critical area regulations, but I, my. Working knowledge of them is that they almost, that they always allow some sort of. Use of the property, you know, so someone might come in and they, they want to build, uh, a big house and a pool and a pier. And that is denied, but they're allowed to build a much smaller house without a pool. And move it up away from the water closer to the road. Um, so in that. Circumstance, looking at it through a takings lens, you wouldn't be denying the person all economically viable use of the property. They can still build a house on it. And its economic impact, it'll have an impact, but it's probably not going to be like a ninety-five percent impact. It's, you know, might reduce the property value by half. Who knows? But that's not going to be enough to get you, um, uh, get you through, uh, any of the, uh, applicable tests in this area. Question here.
I, I may, I may, uh, go against your, your, uh, your boundaries for, for this question, but I'll try anyway. Um. Recently.
You're giving me a heads up.
I could say no comment. Um, um. In Wycomico County, we've recently, um, um. Had a cannabis, uh, zoning allowance for, for certain areas. And one of the tests that we had to, as the planning commission, we had to. Struggle with was how do we do this and not create what was termed an undue burden by the legislature of, of being too restrictive? And I'm just wondering, have there, have there been any test cases that have maybe. Helped us understand what that boundary of an undue burden might be?
In the cannabis world, uh, I, I honestly, I don't know. Um. Uh, my recollection of that law and I looked at it when it came out. Was it struck me that, um, what the legislature was getting at is local jurisdictions that say. Sure, you can come and cite your cannabis business in our jurisdiction. You just have to meet these conditions. Which none of you are going to be able to meet. Um, so it's tantamount to excluding them from the jurisdiction. I think that's what was motivating them and what might be lying behind the undue burden, but I'm not aware of any. Court cases that say, you know, try to get on that spectrum between, um, an, an effective exclusion and just making it. Hard for them to get in there. But I, I think that's an area. That's rich with the possibility of litigation. Okay, let's move on to planning and zoning in Maryland. Some of this is going to, uh, touch upon what Joe, uh, uh, talked about, and I'm going to try not to, uh, belabor these points. So the state has delegated planning and zoning authority to both counties and municipalities. As to counties, how and in which statutes the state delegates planning and zoning. Depends on what form of local governments your jurisdiction has adopted. You see here on the slide, the, the various, um, uh, statutes. And, uh, and articles of the annotated code that lay out. The authorities for different types of counties. Now, these divisions are not absolute because you can have some provisions in. In, in one of these articles that still applies. So like you might have provisions in the local government art- article that. Might apply to non-charter counties or maybe vice versa. So, but generally speaking. These are the places where you go to look at what are the authorities that apply to your particular county. Now, to do that, you need to know which form of county governance, um, you have. Now, Joe had a, a nice map. This is for those who are. Not visual learners. You need to see the words on the page. Here are the different. Types of, of county governments, uh, charter home rule on the left, code home rule and commission. Now, there, the two broad distinctions here are between home rule counties. And commission counties. And there's two types of home rule counties. There's charter counties. That have adopted a county charter that's essentially their constitution and lays out their powers. There's also a code home rule counties. Code home rule means you are, I may back up. Charter counties, uh, the, the possibility of charter counties was established. I think in the nineteen twenties. It was a long time ago and it was not many counties were going for it at the time. And so later on, the legislature created a workaround called code home rule. Uh, for counties that wanted to adopt home rule without going through the process of adopting their own charter. That's what code home role is. You can see they're all, um. You know, fairly recent. I think it was in the sixties that code home rule was established. But the, the important distinction between home rule counties and commissioner counties. Is that, um, code home rule, or I'm sorry, home rule counties, whether it's charter or code, code home rule. Have greater powers than commissioner counties. And. The, the, the obverse of that is that the state. Has less power. So the state has less power to regulate on local matters in charter counties and in. Code home rule counties. The state has greater power to regulate on local matters in commissioner counties. So. Uh, counties that adopt home rule in any way have greater autonomy, greater, um, uh, local power. Vis a vis the state than do commissioner counties. Now, a word on the term commissioner counties. There are counties that are governed by commissions. That have adopted code home rule. So the word commissioner county is. Has come to be known as a shorthand for a county that has not adopted home rule in, in some form.
Um, so this is a. Maybe everybody knows this, but maybe some people don't. But you know, I found this interesting because I've worked for a couple of different counties. So I worked for Anarundel County. They did not have a planning commission. All authority lied with the, the, um, administrator. Yeah, but other counties that I've worked for, they always had a planning commission. Can, can you further explain that or how did that evolve?
Um. Is that still the case in Anarundel County? I thought all counties had planning commissions now.
Uh, we get, we get a lot of questions about Anarundel and I still don't know the answer. Uh, Anarundel has a, a planning advisory board. That's not officially a planning commission, but has some of the aspects of it. Yeah, I've gotten some questions.
Joe, this is.
Probably answer better than me.
My experience and understanding of it is, is it's in the charter. The charter lays out whether or not, how, um. So for example, Frederick County in their charter, they said that they would actually abide by the, um. Uh, the commission, the, the, the non-charter provisions of having the, uh, the planning commission actually. Do certain approvals along the way. But it, it is, it's my understanding that particularly with charter counties, they lay it out in the charter. What the duties of their planted commissions are, whether or not they have the, the, the certain level of authority that they would have in a commission. Versus how much is vested in the county executive and what the planning, um. Board may be advisory and not have the, the same level of approvals, but it should be laid out in the charter.
Yeah, I mean, in, in home rule counties, particularly charter home rule counties, that's always going to be the case. The charter is going to be kind of the font. Of local authority. Once it's adopted, it is again, the local constitution, if you will. And, uh. You know, I, I guess I had thought that all counties were required under state law to have planning commissions, but I'm, I'm gathering, no.
My understanding is it's still. It still meets the requirement by state, uh, by state law. However, their. Authorities and purview is this are distinctly different than many other counties based on their charter.
Gotcha.
The, the full scope of what that authority and purview are, I can't give you an answer. Take a little more research, but yes, they are distinct.
I guess my question was, was that because of the charter home rule?
Yeah, yeah, they can only do that because they are charter home.
Right. Municipalities. Let's talk about them a little bit. There are a hundred and fifty-seven incorporated municipalities in Maryland sprinkled throughout the state with some notable exceptions. There are none in Baltimore County and in, uh, Howard County. Municipalities have no independent power unless they are incorporated. Um, all incorporated municipalities have charters and all have municipal home rule. As a result, municipalities have a good deal of autonomy, more so than commissioner counties. The laws that govern municipal. Planning and zoning authority are laid out here. I'm not going to go over them and, and read them, but, um, a couple of things to remember about municipal planning and zoning. Authority. It applies only within the municipal boundaries themselves, including areas that are annexed, but it has to be within the municipal boundary. And the exercise of municipal planning and zoning authority may not conflict with, um, the, uh. Planning and zoning, uh, authorities of the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission or the Washington Suburban Sanitation Commission. Joe mentioned. Those two, uh, entities in his, uh. Presentation. So, uh, state delegation of planning and zoning authority to both counties and municipalities. Comes with some strings attached. Uh, the local jurisdiction must adopt a comprehensive plan governing land use within its borders. And its ordinances and regulations must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is a general guide that is designed to ensure that public and private property are developed in a way that achieves the general welfare. The local jurisdiction also must use the plan to implement the state's. Twelve planning visions set forth in, uh, section one, two, oh, one of the land use article, things like. Quality of life and sustainability, public transportation, growth areas. They're listed out by statute, but you gotta, um, you have to advance. Those twelve planning visions within your comprehensive plan. Now, planning is. As its name suggests, kind of abstract. This is how we expect our jurisdiction to develop. Comprehensive zoning is where you start to implement that plan and start to make it more concrete. Like the comprehensive plan, comprehensive zoning remains a legislative act that operates on a broad scale. It is a mental, it is meant to apply uniformly, uh, throughout the zone with certain exceptions that we'll get into. But zoning again is where. Local jurisdictions start to define how properties within the different zones. Can be developed. There's, the requirements are laid out in that, uh, uh, in the slide. It has to cover a substantial area. The comprehensive zoning must be a product of careful study. And it must control direct all uses of land in substantially all of the jurisdiction. The next step in making planning and zoning more property specific is the development of zoning ordinances. They set the ground rules by which individual property uses will be determined. Zoning ordinances are again legislatively enacted. They are essentially laws. They regulate density and intensity of development and they permit land uses by right or as a conditional use. Now. By right. Designation, uh, is as its name suggests, pretty obvious. If you own property in a residentially zoned area. You have a right to build a residence in that area. The contours of the residence, you know, that'd be worked out in the building permit stage and whatnot, but you have the right to build a residence in a residential area. Conditional uses is a little bit different. A conditional use, you, conditional uses are those that are available to the property owner, provided that certain conditions are met. They are baked into the zoning ordinance itself, so they are a law. But the conditions are also baked into the law. So the conditional use. The, and, and the two broadly applicable, um, guardrails on what is a permissible con- conditional use is that. The conditional use must be compatible with the neighborhood and further the comprehensive plan. And any adverse effect on surrounding properties is neither unique nor different from the effect it would have if located elsewhere within the zone. So a dentist's office in a residential neighborhood, um, is a common example. It is a business. But it is compatible with the surrounding residential, um, neighborhood and serves the people who live there. It's often allowed under certain conditions so long as putting a dentist's office on a particular lot isn't going to have an effect on the neighboring lots. That is different from if it were placed on a lot down the street. If there was something unique or specific about that lot that meant putting a dentist's office there was a problem. Well, then. You, you can't put a dentist's office there. Um, and the reason why it's structured that way is that it's. It's understood that once the legislature establishes this conditional use, they're basically saying, hey, we understand. What the impact of a dentist's office will be in a residential community, generally speaking, and we're okay with that. So as long as the dentist's office has the same impact, the dentist's office generally have within a residential area, that's okay. But it's only when the specific property involved presents a problem that it's not okay. Importantly, conditional uses are often referred to as special exceptions and perhaps even more so, uh, but, um. They are interchangeable terms. This Maryland Supreme Court uses them interchangeably and equates them expressly. So if someone talks about conditional uses, they mean special exceptions and vice versa. Floating zones. Floating zones again are legislatively, uh, uh, established in a zoning ordinance and yet they're a way. To provide for some variation within the zone. So, uh, it's a zoning classification for a specific pay, uh, purpose that's compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, but it's not. Assigned to a specific property. It floats. So it's a legislative ordinance that says, here we have this residential zone. There can be a grocery store in that residential zone. But we're not zoning any particular property for a grocery store. We're just saying that within this floating, within this zone, there can be a grocery store. And then people will apply to, um. Put a grocery store on their property and that is then later reflected through a zoning map amendment. Some zoning do's and don'ts. Uh, spot zoning is, is kind of a, a dirty word in, uh, planning and zoning context. It's, uh, when a small area in a zoning district. Is placed in a different zoning classification than the surrounding properties. So you just got this whole area that's residential, but we're going to zone this one lot. As industrial, right in the middle of that residential area. That's illegal if it is inconsistent with the uses in the remainder of the district. And done solely for the owner's private interests. And you see this theme working its way on, through a lot of these different provisions, these, these kind of guardrails on planning and zoning authority. They're designed to avoid, avoid sweetheart deals where an individual property owner knows a legislator or is a powerful person generally. And is able to get little property specific benefits. In the zoning context, which is supposed to apply uniformly. It's supposed to, again, apply in broad swaths of land. That are zoned for different uses. It's not supposed to be used to single out different properties for, uh, preferential treatment. So it could though, a spot zoning could be legal when there is a need for the service in the area for the convenience of the residents of the residential zone. Again, such as a grocery store in a residential community. Uh, as long as that is not being done solely for the owner's private interests, but is designed to. Promote general welfare. A spot zoning can be permissible, but it, it is, it kind of remains a dirty. a spot zoning can be permissible, but it is kind of remains a dirty word. So watch out for it. Other kind of more firmer do's and don'ts, contract zoning is never permitted. Now, contract zoning is essentially a backroom deal between the property owner and planning zoning authorities about how that property owner's property was going to be allowed to be developed. The problem is, is it creates this impression of a special privilege that someone has access that the general public doesn't have. And it disrupts the broad comprehensive nature of zoning. It's a side channel that is outside of the local zoning and planning process. And that, under Maryland law, is forbidden. Everything needs to go through the planning and zoning process. Piecemeal zoning, a piecemeal zoning is a parcel specific change in the zoning classification that occurs after the original or comprehensive of zoning. It's a quasi judicial factual inquiry that leads to a legislative act. Now, what does that mean? When we're talking about piecemeal zoning, we're talking about an individual property. So you're 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 changing the zoning classification for a particular parcel. That is allowed only under certain narrow circumstances. There has to be either a mistake of fact in the original zoning or comprehensive rezoning. The legislature just got something wrong when they were doing the the zoning. Or there's evidence of a substantial change in the character of a neighborhood since the original zoning or comprehensive rezoning. You'll you'll hear this referred to as the change or mistake rule. It's broadly applicable to piecemeal zoning. It's a quasi judicial factual inquiry because you have to get into why it was a mistake for this particular property to be zoned the way it was. And so you're not talking about other properties in the zone. You're talking about this property. You do that inquiry, but ultimately it is, again, a legislative act because zoning is a legislative act. So you do that property specific inquiry, and that results then in legislation rezoning that particular parcel, again, if the change mistake rule is satisfied. Note, though, that if a particular proposal satisfies the change of mistake rule, you're not obligated to piecemeal rezone that property. It just allows the local government to do so. Variances. Modifications to requirements, restrictions in zoning law concerning density, bulk, dimensional or area requirements. It's another way of providing some flexibility from planning and zoning requirements that are otherwise uniform throughout a zone. And this type of flexibility is seen at the at the kind of smallest, most granular level because you're getting variances from the rules that would apply to how you build your structure. So here's an example. An existing barn is located on a large lot, barn in the yellow there. And there's a newly proposed residence, or all newly proposed residences must be on, must be beyond a certain distance from the barn. The the MDS or the minimum distance separation, the calculated MDS distance, that's that little arc that shows how far away from the barn any structure needs to be placed. Now, the new property, the the new house is going to be built on the smaller lot to the right. And if you see the black vertical line, that's the normal setback. The house, if it is complies with the setback requirement, is going to violate the minimum distance separation requirement. So you need a variance here, and the test, going back again to the test for variances, it is only granted to avoid hardship due to condition, conditions peculiar to the property. That's what we're talking about here. It's because this house, this new house can't be built and satisfy both the setback and the MDS requirement. The applicant can't create the hardship. That's the case here. The barn was there all along. This new person is just trying to build a house on their property. And the variance must not confer special privilege denied to others. So long as you're applying your variance provisions evenhandedly, this is not going to be a special privilege to anyone. So the proposed new development house is allowed to slide over to the right into the normally applicable setback area to accommodate both, to allow the property to be developed, but still comply with the minimum distance separation requirement. And this way, variances are kind of a safety valve to avoid taking claims. Because if you don't grant the variance here, this person can't build a house on their property, and they may not be able to build anything. There, they'd be denied economically viable use of their property. You'd be looking at having to buy that property. So variances are a way to avoid taking claims. Now, I've talked about, I've mentioned it various times about planning and zoning, operating on broad scale, uniformly uniformly through different zones. And that's kind of a hallmark of Euclidean zoning. And what lies behind this is the uniformity principle, that all properties within a zone are going to be treated uniformly by the land use authorities. There are some exceptions. You can have piecemeal zoning. You can have variances. You can have conditional uses that allow for some variation. But generally speaking, there has to be uniformity. This remains a principle of Maryland law, but it is difficult to apply. And that was highlighted in a recent decision of the Maryland Supreme Court from just last year, the Prince George's County Council case. The case involved an airport located in a rural agricultural zone with single family homes on two acre lots. The airport was a nonconforming use because it was built a long, long, long time ago. And the the land around it was subsequently zoned for for residential or rural agricultural. And there are houses around it on large lots. The airport was failing economically, and the owners of the airport said that they either had to intensify their operations and bring in more airplanes and more airplane traffic, which had caused accidents in the area with planes crashing into houses, planes landing on nearby roads. So that was not a really great thing. So they either had to intensify their operations, or they had to redevelop the airport with townhomes. That's what the developer, the owner of the airport said. Either let us redevelop the parcel with townhomes, or we're going to intensify the use of the airport. The county enacted a text amendment that allowed for townhomes on a class of properties so narrowly and specifically defined that only one airport qualified. This airport didn't mention the airport by name, but said it had to be a certain number of feet or within a certain number of feet of power lines. It had to be a certain number of feet of feet near a tip, a type of roadway. It had several different conditions that, when you triangulate them all, it only applied to one property. And the history of the bill's enactment made it crystal clear that that was the legislature's intent to make this applicable only to the airport because they didn't want other properties being able to claim that and intensify their development in putting townhomes where they were not intended to be put. Question was, is that a violation violation of the uniformity principle? Because you're in a rural agricultural district, and yet you're allowing townhomes. The court upheld the local government decision in a deeply divided and controversial decision. The majority in the dissent agreed on the applicable standard. They said that text amendments are legislative, they're laws, and they're upheld under the equal protection clause, so long as there is a rational basis, and you're not discriminating among similarly situated properties, what we talked about a while ago. But that was the end of the agreement. The the majority concluded that the measure was neutral because it didn't textually, it didn't mention the airport. And even if it was meant to apply to the airport alone, it had a rational basis, namely avoiding planes crashing into houses and onto residential roadways. And because no other properties and because it didn't discriminate between similarly situated properties, because no other property was similarly situated as defined by the legislation, there was no problem there as well. The dissent is a lengthy and scholarly summary of Maryland planning and zoning law. And if you have an hour or two, I recommend it to you because it is is a very good summary. The dissent concludes that the seemingly neutral language of the measure was purely pretextual. Everyone knew that this was about singling out this airport, and they were just writing it in this way to try to avoid this challenge. And the court said that that violates the uniformity principle. This is straying from that principle, and they're just trying to cover it up by not mentioning the airport specifically. Now, again, the the majority won here, and the law was upheld. And the majority believed that the amendment actually improved or increased uniformity by changing an airport into townhomes because townhomes are at least closer to rural agricultural zoning than an airport. So they saw it as moving closer to uniformity. The dissent, however, believed that it reduced uniformity by allowing townhomes in a zone where they were specifically not allowed. Also, the dissent said the airport should have gone through the piecemeal zoning process to achieve this sort of change, that there was some change in mistake. There's been changes in the area. It has developed around the airport in a way that makes the use of the airport no longer consistent with the surrounding zoning classification, and that they should have gone through a piecemeal zoning, which requires some procedural and notice and comment and public participation that legislation doesn't. So the upshot of that case is that uniformity remains a principle of Maryland law, but this case is likely going to make it easier for local jurisdictions to propose this kind of work around the uniformity principle by defining their text amendments so narrowly that they apply only to one property without mentioning it. All right, a related, oh, well, sorry, I kind of talked about this without showing the slide. It is now. I don't know why it's flashing. Is that a? Okay. So you followed existing law in getting your permit, and you've made changes on the property manifesting commencement of the work such that the public is on notice. If you have done both of these things, you, as the property owner, will have vested. So this, in Maryland, requiring both a permit and some work on the property to show that, you know, kind of show the public that you're you're moving forward with this project makes Maryland a late vesting state. Early vesting states will just require a permit, or they might require something as little or as preliminary as a site plan approval. But in Maryland, you need to have a permit and have begun work. And that is significance because once a develop, a development right has vested, the property owner is permitted to move forward with the project, even if the law changes subsequently. And you see this sometimes happen. A, a, someone will get a permit to build something. And then the public learns, oh, my God, they got a permit to build a rubble fill on this land. That's going to affect us in many different ways. They raise a ruckus about it. The legislature says, well, we're going to pass a new law that says you can't build rubble fills in this area. If your rights have vested, the local legislature can't do that because, without paying for your property because you now have a vested right if you've gotten your permit and you've begun to work on it. So this decision as to when rights vest is is critical for both the developer and the opponents of developer, of development. They're very much focused on this issue. All right, let's pause for questions and answers before I get into boards of appeal and then ethics rules. Are we doing on time? Okay.
Hey, Adam, just real quick before, in other words, that I received one question. I think you've addressed it. Is are conditional uses and variances similar, or do they work towards the same opportunity outcome? And and my counsel to people typically is that conditional uses and special exceptions deal with the use of the property. But variances deal with the dimensional nature. So there may be occasions where a conditional use may also ask for a variance to to get it. Now, again, the conditional use may have some standards in place. But but can you speak a little about about the differences and how variances and conditional uses may interact with each other?
Well, I I think, generally speaking, that's how I think the way you've described it, Chuck, is right. Conditional uses talk about the use to which a property can be made. Variances talk about the building that is being constructed on the property. And you need, like we had in the example with the barn and the house next door, you need some changes in how and where you can build that that house on the property in order to allow it to be built. The conditional use, if it were applicable in that situation, would be to allow houses on lots like that lot under certain conditions. Now, you can have what are called use variances. They are not allowed. Where are they not allowed? Yeah, so Land Use four, two, oh, six allows only size or area variances and thus effectively prohibit use variances, which would allow for a use that is not otherwise allowed within the zoning area. But because this provision exists in division one of the land use article, it is only required in the six commissioner counties that have not adopted home rule. That said, in the other counties that have adopted some form of home rule, it is fairly common to have similar limitations in their local codes that limit variances to the dimension, size of the building as opposed to the use. But there can be some conceptual overlap in those jurisdictions that allow use variances. Where they are allowed, though, they are subject to a different set of criteria, a different test than apply to the variances, the more common variances that I described, which, again, are focused on the density and size of the building that's being constructed.
Thanks, Adam. I will say just for for the audience's purposes, Maryland is a little bit unique compared to some other county, other states where they do allow and provisions for what they call use variances. So that is a distinction that you just pointed out, that that it does not always apply in other states in this, in other states. Thank you.
Oops, sorry, I'm backing up.
I'd like to have your opinion on parametal zoning.
On who? On who?
Pyramidal zoning, where you have commercial properties that will be allowed to build residential. Mixed use.
So, so Adam, so pyramidal zoning is often used in Houston as an example. Where you're allow, now, the applicant may be talking about something else in this. Pyramidal zoning sometimes allows for at the base of it is industrial and on top of industrial, you could have residential. And, and, and so it, it goes in hierarchy of intensity of uses. There are, again, usually that, that's not a, a typical type of zoning that is out there. Houston is, is an example of pyramidal zoning. But if he's talking about mixed use, that's a different story. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt in that, but that's to help clarify what I know pyramidal zoning means.
So you mean pyramidal zoning in, in terms of a pick, a lot is allowed to be developed with commercial use on the floor with residential use above it?
No. Commercial property be used as residential. It happened here in Ocean City, that's a big concern of ours.
Yeah, given that, given that this is the first I've ever heard the term, I'm going to pass on that question.
Maybe it's only here.
But you know, if it's laid out in the legislate, if it's legislated in the zoning process. I don't see what the constitutional problem would be. It certainly wouldn't be a takings issue or anything like that and planning and zoning. I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm going to stop there because I just did not familiar.
I mean, is your example, did the zoning permit that? That it permitted the, the residential use on, okay. So, I mean, then there would have been a legislative decision at one point to, to modify the zoning to permit that.
Was, so we're talking about piecemeal zoning of that property to make it, and as long as it, did they go through the, the property specific change mistake process?
That's a good question. I can't answer that question for you at this point, but and, and the issue, the issue is that then it becomes commercial permitting. Which you don't have setbacks. So it becomes a whole spaghetti type of issues of permitting.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't, I don't know how relevant this is, but you, you know, you just made my brain start thinking. And of course, we haven't encountered this issue in Allegheny County yet. But you know, now that so many people are working remotely and there's so many offices that are empty. You know, you are starting to see in the larger jurisdictions where they are, you know, seeking to change a lot of office buildings into residential. So I wonder, you know, if what you're kind of bringing up, you know, if this is starting to be an issue or, or how, how are they handling?
I, I would think that would go through the change in mistake rule. We've had a change, namely the pandemic has completely changed the way we view workspaces and that the areas now or the building is now more suitable for residential use than office use. I think that's the way it would handle it. All right, let's move on to somewhat more mundane topics, boards of appeal. They are required for commissioner counties and for municipalities. And they hear and decide cases involving appeals where an error is alleged in administrative enforcement or application of local land use law. Conditional uses and special exceptions and applications for variances. So there's only those specific things can a board of appeal decide in a commissioner county. In charter counties, they're authorized, but they're not required. But where they are created in a charter county. They can be given broader powers than just the three that I, that are that was listed in the prior slide with respect to commissioner counties. So again, applications for zoning variations, exceptions, zoning map amendments. Administrative actions on a whole variety of different things. Assessment of special benefit taxes, even things like retirement issues and animal control issues can be decided by a board of appeal in a charter county if it is so laid out in that charter, that county's charter. So again, the county charter is allowed to define the scope of powers of their board of appeals, but they're not required to have a board of appeal in the first place. Board of appeals are a lot, they function a lot like courts. Their proceedings are subject to a variety of formal requirements. They have to be publicly announced, they're subject to the Open Meetings Act, they must be recorded. Witness testimony must be made under oath and must comply with various local rules, procedures on the order of proceedings. Rules of procedure, the deliberation of voting mostly has to be in open session. The record must reflect the vote of each member on any matter voted upon. And the board must generate a written opinion that reflects factual findings and legal conclusions. So again, it's a very formal process, a lot like a court. And like a court, they render quasi judicial decisions. Quasi judicial decisions meaning that they're listening to the facts with respect to a single property. And making a decision with respect to that single property. They're not legislating, they're not determining the zoning throughout the entire jurisdiction. They're hearing a dispute about a specific property, hearing facts about it and rendering a legal conclusion. Those factual findings are given deference on appeal. So decisions in the board of appeals can go up to the circuit courts and the circuit courts will defer to how they sort out the facts. How the board of appeals sorts out the facts before it. The court is not bound by the board of appeals conclusions of law. Appeals of decisions are heard on this, in the circuit court on the record. Meaning that you can't have new evidence or testimony in the circuit court. The circuit court again is bound by the factual record developed before the board. Also, like courts. Boards of appeal are not allowed to engage in ex parte communications. Now, you might run into your legislator at the local grocery store and talk the legislator's ear off about a bill that is currently before the legislature. That's totally fine. But you can't go to a judge who's handling your case in circuit court and talk to them about your case. That's an ex parte communication. You can't do that, the judge would stop you and say, nope, can't talk to me about that. That same rule applies in board of appeals. When a matter is pending, a party is prohibited from communicating with a member of the board of appeals outside of a formal hearing. If the communication occurs, the board member should disclose to all parties and summarize the communication on the record. Doesn't necessarily mean that the member of the board of appeals has to recuse themselves. They just have to disclose the ex parte communication on the record so that everyone knows that it was given. Questions about boards of appeals. Before we move on to ethics. Hearing none and given the interest of time. Talking about ethics now, state ethics law prohibits both improprieties and appearances of impropriety. There, its purpose is to ensure fair dealings by officials holding positions of public trust. That's all fairly obvious stuff. The general provisions article contains provisions that require counties and municipalities to enact ethics provisions on conflicts of interest, financial disclosure and lobbying. And those local ethics requirements have to be similar to state ethics law. Now, similar here does not mean identical. Local jurisdictions have some flexibility to have ethics provisions that are tailored to their own circumstances. But they can't, they can't be radically different. You, you, I think a local jurisdiction would have to point to something about the local context, specific local context that makes their rule more suited to that context than the state rule. But generally, the safe harbor here is to enact local ledge, local ethics rules that are the same as the state's rules. So let's talk about each of these three things. Conflicts of interest. You can't hold outside employment that would impair your impartiality or independence of judgment. So like a forester in DNR's forest service could not serve as a member of a local planning commission. Because the commission had duties relating to site plan approval and forestry management activities that were also regulated by DNR. So he would essentially have two masters in this thing. He would be answering to the planning commission and answering to DNR. So his impartiality was called into question. Prestige, you cannot use your prestige of office for private gain. So you can't testify at a public hearing on a wetlands permit, for example, and for someone you know. They've applied for a wetlands permit, you can't show up at the hearing and testify on their behalf and identify yourself as a member of the planning commission. Because there you're trying to use the fact that you are a member of the planning commission to give weight to your testimony and benefit someone else for their own private gain. Confidential information, you can't use confidential information acquired in your official capacity for your own benefit of that anyone, for anyone else. That's kind of obvious. As for legal or economic interests, it gets a little more complicated. You can't hold or acquire an interest in a business that contracts with or is regulated by your agency. You can't be employed by a business that contracts with or is regulated by your agency. And you can't represent any party for a contingent fee before any local body. Now this applies both to you and to your qualifying relatives. So that would include spouses, parents, children or siblings. Other conflict of interest rules. You cannot solicit or accept gifts of more than nominal value, $20, from any person who is regulated by or does business or seeks to do business with your agency. And after you leave local employment, you cannot act as the paid representative of another in connection with a matter that you personally participated in significantly while employed. Now, that, that does not mean that you have to have been the decision maker in that matter. When it, when you worked for government. It is enough that you might have provided a vi, advice or given recommendations with respect to the matter. But you had to have participated personally. Just because a matter was going on at the local government at the time you were there, doesn't mean that you can't represent someone with respect to that matter after you've left government service. You have to have participated in it. Recusal, when is it appropriate, necessary to recuse yourself? A planning commissioner spouse has a development project that is coming to the commission for site plan approval. There you've got this close, personal connection. You've got kind of a stake in the matter that's coming before the planning commission. There you're going to have to recuse yourself. Now, that means you do not participate in any part of the matter. It's not just a matter of not voting. You can't sit there and talk about how great the project is, but say, but I'm recusing myself, I'm not voting. So you have to recuse yourself from the entire thing. And, and in contrast to ex parte communications, disclosure relationship is not enough. You also have to recuse. Now, questions on ethics, I'm happy to answer what I can, but really it's the state ethics commission that you go to with these questions. Our office actually is not allowed to opine on the meaning of ethics provisions. If we get questions about that, we dutifully send them to the state ethics commission, which is the agency statutorily charged with interpreting their provisions. So if anyone has a broad question about ethics, I'm happy to try to field it, but if it gets any specific, I'm going to have to beg off and refer you to the state ethics commission. Okay, let's just move on to the test and then we'll be done. All right, development rights do not vest until construction is complete. Anyone think that's the right answer? No, now, once construction is complete, yes, your rights will have vested, but that's not the point at which rights vest. How about the applicant obtains government approval on a preliminary plan? No, that's the rule in early vesting states, but Maryland is a late vesting state. Applicant has a building permit and has made visible changes to the property thereby giving notice to the public. Yes, that is the rule in Maryland. Well, what about public notice is printed in a local newspaper? No, now, there is some flavor of notice in the Maryland rule. But you don't have to have publication in the newspaper to have your rights vest. A regulatory taking occurs when, A, your lawyer says so. Given how squarely takings law is, that's not a bad answer, but it's not, it's not the rule. A use is not permitted under current rules. Well, if no use is permitted under current rules, it might. But not just because a particular use is not permitted. A regulation removes all economic value in a property. Yes, that would be a Lucas style takings, it's the one you, you're going to hear most about in your daily work. When it is determined that a variance is needed. No, now again, variances are a useful way to avoid a takings claim. But it isn't part of the test of determining whether a taking has happened. An unconstitutional exaction occurs when the exaction has nothing to do with the governmental purpose for the exaction. Yes, that is the essential nexus test, the, the Nolan test. The impact of the exaction far exceeds the governmental purpose for the exaction. Also, yes, that is the Dolan rough proportionality test. There is both an essential nexus and rough proportionality between the exaction and the governmental purpose of the exaction. No, if you satisfy that, it's constitutional. That's the, a statement of the test. Okay, hearings before a board of appeals must be recorded. Yes, be held in the evening. No, they sometimes are, but don't have to be. Have testimony taken under oath. Yep, like we said, trial type procedures. Include the recorded vote or failure to vote of each member. Yes, that's got to be stated on the record. Counties and municipalities must enact public official ethics rules for the following, lobbying, financial disclosure, conflicts of interest. There it is, there's the clue that, that Joe, it's all of the above. Yeah, you ruined it for me. Ex parte communications from a party to a board of appeals member should be encouraged to gain additional information for decision making. No, always require recusal of the board of appeals member. No, we talked about that that's not the case. Must be disclosed to all parties and summarized on the record. Yes, that's the rule that applies. Ex parte communications should be kept confidential under one or more executive privileges. No. Sometimes privileges do apply to our communications, but not to an ex parte communication with a party appearing before the board. All right, that's it for me. Unless anyone has some last minute questions, I have to hit the road to Cambridge.
Anything online, Chuck, John?
Chuck. No, 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 no additional questions at this point, so we're good. Thank you again, Adam.
Okay, great. Thank you for being with me for however long it was.
We've been going for a while. Somebody give people a break. It's eleven thirty one now. We'll come back at eleven forty. We got two modules left. Thank you. I will say I used, I used to be a teacher and I took a class in education school on assessment and. It was one of my favorite classes. Just interesting. But one of the things they they taught you is that if you are. Going to put all of the above or none of the above on your multiple choice questions, you have to put it on every single one. Otherwise, it's too obvious of a giveaway that that's probably the answer. So we need to put that on every single one of our questions. And then. Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you all. Yeah, eleven forty.
All right, we're going to go ahead and get started and also have some people filtering in here in a second. So you get to deal with me again for the next thirty minutes or so. We're going to talk about the comprehensive plan and the planning commissioners role. And then our assistant secretary Chuck Boyd will wrap up with growth management tools. So. Okay, so we're going to talk now about the comprehensive plan. Does anybody in here have experience? With working on a comprehensive plan? Either developing one or implementing it. Ruth, I saw your hand first. Did you want to, can you share? What is your experience with a comprehensive plan?
I've worked in several counties and I've helped. And I've worked in different capacities. I've. Worked for long range planning departments before where we put together comprehensive plans for the entire county. Sometimes you'll do master plans for individual. I mean, they'll all call it something different, you know, whether it be a municipality or a.
Sub area.
Council or something like that, right? We're currently getting ready to do the comprehensive plan for, for city of Cumberland. And so I'm involved with that. But anyway, I think it's fun. I like the comprehensive plans.
Wow, I don't hear that often. It's good to, it's good to hear somebody's a fan.
I do, but and then from that, then that allows you. To look at your code and your zoning and and. And. If it needs changing or whatever to support those those goals, you know, it allows you to do that.
Comment over here.
My experience is pretty singular. I'm on the Salisbury Y Comico planning commissioner. We're just starting. The comprehensive plan update for Salisbury. And so we're at that early stage of a. Multi-month process of. Soliciting public input and and deciding what are the important things that the community wants to have in the plan. So public participation is. Is a big piece of this as well.
That's good. You're already teaching some of the stuff that I'm going to be talking about. Thanks. All right, well, let's get into it then. All right, so. These are the planning values, potentially the purposes, the things you need to do as part of a comprehensive plan generally. We'll get more into the details. But you know, the ideas to protect public health, safety and welfare. To conserve resources, right? It was one of the first things we talked about in this training today. A well-designed, functioning, built environment, you know, where things are going to go, not just as planning commissioners, but as a community member, stakeholders, individuals who want to invest in your community. Again, should be predictable, transparent. You know, I would recommend to anybody who's looking to. Buy a home somewhere, invest somewhere to make sure they read that comprehensive plan. Because oftentimes people will not be aware of the things that are planned around them. They purchase a property and then they're upset when the plan actually comes to fruition. So. The idea is to make it predictable, transparent. And to always involve the public as as was mentioned. Okay, what is the planning commissioner's role? Specifically. There's some things up here on the screen, but I'll read to you what land use article three dash two zero one says about plan preparation. A planning commission shall prepare a plan. By studying the present conditions, projections of future growth and relation to neighboring jurisdictions. So the land use article. Puts the responsibility for developing the plan on the planning commission. Now we know that staff have a major role. The public has a major role. Oftentimes you will get consultants or other vendors to help with it. But it is a specific duty is given. To the planning commission. Now, the local governing body. Is the one who finally adopts it. Or any amendments that that happen, but it is the planning commission's role to develop it. Through the process and then make a recommendation for a final plan to be adopted by the. The. The governing body. Okay. So before the next slide, we're going to start talking about. The planning visions. Adam talked about how the land use article also says that a. Planning commit or a comprehensive plan must implement the the planning visions of Maryland. Before I get to the planning visions, can anybody think anticipate, or maybe you know. What one of the twelve planning visions is? No wrong answers here. Do no harm, okay? I'll say that's not one of them, but it could that that concept could be embodied in the visions. Yes. Yes. That's one. I don't know if that's exactly how it's worded, but that's what it means. Yes. Any other ideas on what a vision might be? Well, we'll look at. All right. Here they are, the twelve visions. Originally, there were seven divisions and they were established by the nineteen ninety two Economic Growth, Resource Protection and Planning Act, which I mentioned earlier today. With subsequent language, five more have been added. So you see everything from housing to infrastructure, public participation. And if you go into the land use article and other sections of Maryland code, you'll find a fuller definition of what these mean. The description of what they're aiming for. Okay. So a comprehensive plan is. Yeah, so while while a comprehensive plan needs to implement the visions. Right? Comprehensive plans often and usually do and should have their own community vision. How does the more special localized, specific to our community vision. Align with the state's vision, which are much again umbrella visions are much broader. So during the comprehensive planning, actually, I want to move this. Move it farther out of the way. Hopefully people online are, nothing's cut off for them. Okay. So comprehensive plan should really start with the vision for the future. What? Do you envision after this plan is implemented? Is is the community going to be like? It should involve the evolution, the conditions, the trends. You need to look into the past and into the future, right? What has been happening? Over the past, however, many decades throughout our history, what happened in the last plan? How did the last plan influence our community, our growth? All right, so by looking at the past, you can see the trends, the patterns, and then look towards the future. Do you like those patterns trends? So there's some aspects that you like, some you don't. How can we modify it now to get where we want to go? And then you want to establish goals, objectives and policies to help realize that vision. I like to think of goals as, these are different in all sorts of all comprehensive plans and there's no right or wrong way, but I like to think of goals as. Desired outcomes. They're kind of like a vision, a little more specific. This is what, this is what we want our community to look and feel like to be. Objectives are like measurable things. So that could be. You know, if you, if you have a vision of being a more more walkable community, right? Your objectives could be. This many, it could be as specific as this many linear feet of sidewalk, but it could also be just actual better direct connections between uses. And then policies help you make decisions when. Development proposals or things come up. And these should all be included in a comprehensive plan. All right, so comprehensive plans should include inventors. I, I probably shouldn't say the word should. These are just common things that are included. We're seeing more and more. Different kinds of comprehensive plans. We always encourage jurisdictions to take unique approaches. While there are certain requirements. It doesn't, it shouldn't be very formulaic, but often they do include inventories. So inventories of demographics in your community, community facilities, your transportation networks. Acres of land uses, sensitive areas. It also should or often includes analysis. What are the road conditions, congestion? What is our employment, employment growth been? Our residential capacity. Right with our current zoning, our current land use, how many more people could we absorb? Or do we need to make changes for our expected growth? Or lack of growth? Other green and water infrastructure needs. Want to make sure you include recommendations, implementation strategies. These could include business incentives, zoning, funding, partnerships, policies. All sorts of ways to implement your comprehensive plan. And then just as important is feedback and adaptation. And then just as important is feedback and adaptation, adaptive management, right? Very few comp plans are just going to be just come down and be perfect for the next 10 years, right? You hopefully you don't have to change a whole lot, but you need to make sure you reflect on them. You revisit them occasionally and have mechanisms in place to amend them. All right, so there are certain requirements for comprehensive plans. And beyond just the vision, so the vision's like the umbrella idea of what your your plans should put forth, implement. But then there are specific, what they call elements of comprehensive plans. So Maryland statute requires these certain elements. And when I, when I say elements, it really means like the definition of that term or the way you think of the idea of element, like there is an element of this plan that addresses this. They're often reflected in comprehensive plans as chapters, and that's perfectly fine. But I don't want anybody to think that they have to be, right? So you you could have a housing interspersed throughout your plan. It's not in one chapter called the housing chapter, and it would still have a housing element. Or you could have a specific chapter, however you decide to do it. So the these do differ between charter counties and non-charter counties. We, I think we're all usually municipal, we're all municipal here except for Calvert County. But Calvert County is a non-charter county, so that it has the same comprehensive plan element requirements as municipalities do. So some examples are listed here on the screen. So you have to address water resources. If you're a municipality, how are you going to grow? So if you plan on annexing land in the future, you need to address that in your municipal growth element. So you have to some way indicate that a certain area, a certain property may be annexed. Sometimes this is done through a map of potential annexation areas. Sometimes this is done as an actual description of the property, some kind of indication that you could potentially annex that property. Doesn't mean you have to annex, but it's better to kind of like cover your bases, right? Because in the future, if that opportunity comes to annex and you don't have an indicated that in your comprehensive plan that you may annex it. You by state law, you cannot annex it. All right, so and you might have to amend your comprehensive plan. Some are optional, like a mineral resources element. The way the the Land use article words it is if current geological information is available. It doesn't say what current means, you have to address mineral resources. This is often, it could be mining, it could be quarrying, things like that. Some other ones, land use, as you would anticipate. So, you know, commercial, mixed use, residential uses, agricultural preservation, uses of that nature, community facilities, schools, parks, police facilities, fire stations, fisheries is a if then required element. So if you if you're on tidal waters, you need a plan for fisheries. And then other ones include areas of critical state concern, development regulations. This is often, you know, tied up with implementation. What are your procedures for, you know, developing, do you have any incentives for development? Do you encourage any certain kind of development in certain ways? And then the newest one is the housing element. It used to be a permitted element. Now this is required and it's as of June 1, 2020, it's required in all comprehensive plans. And it was amended in 2021 for charter county or non-charter counties municipalities to affirmatively further fair housing. And then it was amended again this year to extend that affirmably furthering fair housing requirement to charter counties. Okay. Over. So and then these are optional elements. They're permitted. Really, there's nothing, there's nothing saying you can't add other elements to your comprehensive plan. But these are just ones that the Land use article says, you know, you can consider these and add them. They're just not required. Okay. So the comprehensive planning processes, let me see, okay. This is not an easy task, right? You'll see meetings like this. You often have to grapple with different viewpoints, right? So a quick question to you all, what? What would be some conflicting viewpoints in a comprehensive plan that you might have to deal with?
The possibility of growth or zoning changes?
Yes, growth is usually the main, one of the big ones, right? Growth or no growth, slow growth, accepting growth. Yes. Any other thoughts and issues you might have to deal with in the comprehensive planning process?
Yes, sir.
In Calvert County, we have a problem with the rising water level.
Okay.
And have a lot of low line communities and a real problem at this point.
And would you have different viewpoints on how to handle that?
There's not much, a lot of people right along the beach, raising 12, 15 feet.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we've got to prove that, of course.
Yeah.
Forward.
Of course. Yeah, I mean, you're often going to find people with different opinions in any community on any topic. But if you're talking about a comprehensive plan, right, there's could be a conflict between valuing property rights versus the desiring to preserve your rural land. All right, there could be a concern with those who are wanting to promote more housing for affordability or just to have general housing versus those who may have concern that an increase in housing will lead to inadequacy of your public facilities. So it'll fill schools or it'll clog our transportation network. These are just some common things that you're always going to, not always, but often going to have to deal with in a comprehensive planning process. So as we've mentioned before, and we'll keep coming back to that the stakeholders should and by the the planning vision for public participation must be included in the planning process. So this should include residents, landowners, business people. It's not always people that have to live in your community. It could be somebody that owns a business in your community or people that you want to invest in your community, even if they don't live there. Advocacy groups, community groups, they're representing certain topics or certain areas. And then government agencies, both internal and external, right? So the a comprehensive plan shouldn't be just developed by the planning department, right? If not, not every jurisdiction has, some municipalities are very small. They might only have one staff member and they still have to do a comprehensive plan if they have planning and zoning authority. So I know this differs, but it should really, the term comprehensive is reflective of the type of groups that should be involved in the planning process. I was talking about the visions and Sarah, our resident expert on the visions who was thinking we're only a couple of slides past them, Sarah. I'm going to let you say a couple of things about the visions.
Um, so I'll jump in and assume that that Joe covered the basics of how they're used in the state of Maryland. But this legislative session, we passed a bill called HB 225 SB 309, which updates the structure of the sub-cabinet in some simple but meaningful ways. So we're shifting the smart growth sub-cabinet, which oversees a lot of the work about where we grow in Maryland, such as the PFA work, sustainable communities designation programs and things like that. But we're changing their name from smart to sustainable growth. And one of the things that we shifted and the reason for that shift is we wanted to incorporate the three E's of broader sustainability. Because smart growth has been seen in Maryland as kind of environmental. So we added economy, equity, community resilience and neighborhood vitality. That previously said neighborhood conservation. And we changed it to vitality, to be focused around place making, making special places as we're transforming our communities. And we're now embarking on an update to the 12 planning visions, which Joe probably mentioned because they have not been updated since 2009. And they're kind of our visions for what community land use and development looks like in the state of Maryland. Ruth had the pleasure of already participating in one of our regional roundtables. We have four more coming up through the end of July. And we look forward to your input on how land use and zoning are and aren't working in your community, what you may want and need from the state, and then what you want those visions to look like and how they can maybe be more actionable and measurable. But I anticipate at a minimum, we will incorporate equity, economy, vitality and resilience into an update to the 12 planning visions, but would love you all's input. You can email our whole MDP team at any time for your thoughts on how you're using the visions. How you wish you could use the visions better and so forth and so on for us to incorporate into this update so that it's hopefully driving outcomes we hope to achieve with with land use and development. The last thing I'll say on it is we're also looking at ways to incorporate the state's plan and the governor's priorities into those visions as well. So I look forward to your input. You're good on the lovely.
There we go. Thank you, Sarah. Yes, so yeah, you saw this. I told you it started with seven visions and it's been changed over time. The last time was 2009 that they added some, so we are definitely looking at them again. I encourage input on that. All right, let's continue here. Okay, so comprehensive plan usually involves multiple work sessions of the planning commission with staff, with others involved as well. You see on the right here, what they call SWAT assessment, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. It's not something exclusive to planning, but it's often used in planning early in a comprehensive or other planning process to talk about your community. The existing conditions, we talked about this before, we want to make sure you gather it. Where are we now? Any background studies that can inform the plan, sometimes they're housing studies, transportation studies, market studies that could be incorporated into into a comprehensive plan or serves as foundation. What are the key issues facing our community? What did the public say? What are they interested in? What would they like to see? And then in these work sessions that can happen throughout the planning process, you would review draft, either be the final draft of a plan or draft sections as you go along. All right. Comprehensive plan is not a standalone document, just like you should work with other state or other local agencies, like a transportation department or other local public works and another state, other your neighboring jurisdictions. Comprehensive plans are connected to other plans as well. All right, so I talked about municipal growth and their connection to annexations, school planning, right? Schools should, growth of schools or school investment should reflect areas where residential development is happening. Water resource planning, where you supply sewer and public water is a key driver of growth. And it can be a limiter of growth too. So, you know, you want to plan your water resources to reflect your areas of growth or other kinds of ways you want to shape your community. This must be done in coordination with a county because in Maryland counties have the control with input from municipalities on the water and sewer plants. Transportation planning. Question? Oh, oh, Sarah, it's a question here.
It's just a question about school planning. I like the idea that you're suggesting, but I'll say practically where I live, sit on the commission for Y Comico County. We provide input back to the school district about upcoming developments and projects that are being planned. And we solicit input to them to make sure that they have accounted for potential land use changes or new site plan approvals that we're about to make in their planning of schools. And they they basically say, this is really, really nice that you're giving us this input. It's not actionable by us as this, as the school board, because we can only build based on the number of kids that we have today. Yeah, you know, and in fact, you often see, you know, a brand new school ribbon cutting and day one it's at capacity and there's there's portables, you know, out there. So I love this idea, but it doesn't really work from my seat.
Yeah, and it's, it, this is in many respects, it's ideal, what you strive for. But you're not the only community that they, the 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 planning, planning side of things and the school planning side of things are don't, don't often, even if they're trying to to work together, it doesn't always align because of different demands. And oftentimes, you know, schools, schools have properties where they can develop schools on based on what they can get. And it's, it's not, doesn't always align with the the growth policies and the comprehensive plan. But that being said, what you're doing, and even if it doesn't always achieve the desired outcomes, is what every what you should be striving to do is have that coordination and not work in silos. But yes, there's, there's areas for growth always in these or improvement in these areas. Okay, let me continue. But the main thing is that comprehensive plans should align with other plans and other plans should align. If you're developing these plans, they should be referenced back to what the comprehensive plan is saying as much as possible. So in so jurisdictional is coordination is important, both between municipalities and the county that they're in, but also between neighboring counties, two municipalities that are close together, right? Water, resources, roads, they don't, you know, they flow, even housing, they they're in between. You know, they, they don't stop at the borders and it's very important that you coordinate. So you know, your, your growth plans, your plans for capital investment align with, and don't conflict with with what those other plans are. And as part of the final review process, you do need to send your, your draft plans to neighboring jurisdictions. We'll talk about the 60-day review process here in a second. But this is important that comprehensive plans don't, don't, aren't only insular documents. It doesn't mean that a municipality is completely beholden to what a county says or vice versa. But there should be that coordination. Again, another example, things could always be improved. It might not always. Municipalities and counties don't always get along. We understand that. But these are best practices. All right. So then there's the reviewing the draft comprehensive plan. So the draft is developed by the planning commission, as I was talking earlier about one of the main responsibilities of the planning commission is to shepherd the comprehensive plan. There needs to be 60-day public notice prior to the public hearing in which it may, a planning commission may recommend it for approval. You could have multiple hearings before that. You could have multiple work sessions before that. But if there's a public hearing where you've gotten to a final draft that the planning commission is happy with, and you may recommend it for approval at a public hearing to go to the legislative body for their final approval. Then you need to give 60-day public notice, not just to the public, but you also need to send it to Maryland Department of Planning, part of the 60-day review and neighboring jurisdictions. And this is the comment review period, again, before recommendation for adoption. So empty, when we get it, we will distribute it to other state agencies and to our internal divisions, the draft plan. This includes amendments too. We give them approximately 30, 40 days to submit comments to us. Then our regional planners will coordinate or pull all the comments together, they'll do their own commenting into one document that's delivered to you. And then that document needs to be included as part of the public record for that public hearing. It doesn't mean you have to recommend it for adoption at that public hearing because you may, there may be comments that come from us or from neighboring jurisdictions that change your mind on something. But it, because there's been plenty of times where we submit comments and the plan isn't adopted for much later. But if you think, if you could be adopting or recommending it for adoption, you need to send it to us 60 days ahead of time. And then we were talking about adaptive management feedback. Maryland law does require an implementation report, five years after plan adoption submitted to us. We have a template for that on our local government annual reporting tools page. I'm happy to point out to you it's to help make that as easy as possible. And then a jurisdiction is required to review a comp plan every 10 years. There's a misconception out there that all comp plans need to be updated every 10 years. They don't need to be updated every 10 years. They need to be reviewed every 10 years. Most jurisdictions, and maybe not most, it's common that they will take them every 10 years because population and other conditions have changed, but you do need to review it every 10 years. All right, let's oh, wait, sorry. So we do have comprehensive plan assistance, not just MDP, other agencies as well. We developed a lot of resources to help jurisdictions. They changed back about 10 years ago. We switched from having to do review your comp plan every six years to reviewing it every 10 years. This was to better align it with the decennial census data. But there's nothing saying you have to do a new comp plan after new census data comes out. It just says every 10 years. Now, the, the, the level of detail that you get in, in interdecennial or in between the census information out through American Community Survey data is so rich that there's nothing really saying you have to use it, decennial census. So we developed that. This is a, on the right, we developed a lot of resources for the housing element, which is the newest one that came into requirement a few years ago. So we encourage you to to look at those resources and to also reach out to me or our regional planners. We have regional planners throughout the state that can help you as well. Okay, any questions about comprehensive plans? Anything online?
Nothing online right now.
Okay. I'm, I'm determined to give Chuck as much time as possible because he always gets squished for time at the end. So we're getting to growth management. All right, so I'm going to keep this relatively short, but we'll talk about planning commission roles and responsibilities. It's kind of what we've been talking about this whole day, but here's a couple, couple more here, right? So planning commissions, oftentimes you might feel alone, but you're, you're not alone, especially when you have an angry public hearing going on. But you're part of a team. There's you and Board of Appeals as well. The, the local administration, any planning professionals, if you have planning staff, legislators, we would like to be considered part of your team, Maryland Department of Planning, but it's not just us, it's other state agencies as well. So you know, there, there are many places you can go to help and seek resources. Planning commissions play a major role in determining future land use and implementing the comprehensive plan as we mentioned. They also have formal and informal roles as determined by local jurisdictions, through provisions of their codes, charters, bylaws and general practices. So what each and every planning commission does is not the same across every single jurisdiction. As we've described earlier, charter counties can have even more leeway. But you know, local procedures, local resolutions and other things that are passed, requirements, bylaws can decide or determine what you have, what your responsibilities are. Some of the primary responsibilities are to help create the local comprehensive plan. I think I've said that too many times, but incorporating the state's 12 planning visions and help create and apply maps and regulations that implement the comprehensive plan, such as a comprehensive rezoning that comes after a comp plan subdivision, subdivision regulations and other development requirements. Right? In developing the comprehensive plan, the planning commission follows a process that yes, involves all stakeholders, conducts meetings and hearings to receive input on the plan, work with staff in informal public hearings and informal settings such as work sessions, develop strategies and recommendations to be included in the plan, coordinates the 60-day review, which we talked about earlier, and then again, or the plan to the legislative body for their consideration. Okay. So now we'll talk about things that are not specific to comprehensive plan. Planning commissions have different roles depending on whether they are charter or not charter, as we've mentioned before. Specifically in non-charter county municipalities, who I think that's everybody, is everybody we're dealing here. Planning commissions play an advisory role in relation to zoning ordinance changes. Again, often comes after a comprehensive plan, changes subdivisions and development regulations. Some development approvals, such as large planned unit developments, any of you have planned unit developments in your communities? Sometimes a capital budgeting, programming and others, and other implementation growth management tools, which we've talked about today. And Chuck is going to talk more about later, such as land preservation, annexation, development rights and responsibilities. There are some areas that planning commissions have approval authority. These include approval over the use of public land, such as public streets, parks and other purposes. This is done through their authority to review and approve subdivisions and site plans. The authority to review and approve some types of developments such as minor subdivisions, we'll talk a little bit more about that in a second, can be, can be delegated by non-charter counties and municipalities. But then this delegation can be to an administrative process. So this is very specific. It's where you need to check your own local rules and requirements. Sometimes this authority will be vested in the planning commission and sometimes it can be delegated to a more staff or administrative process. All right, in some charter, I know nobody's here from a charter county, but let's talk about it. In some charter counties, authority for approval of rezonings, special exceptions and invariances is given to an administrative hearing officer, while other provisions such as review and recommendation of a capital improvement program is given to a planning advisory board or a planning commission. Again, this, you'll find this specified in the individual charters or as Adam described them, the constitutions for counties. Okay. Work sessions are distinct from, from public hearings and they're usually conducted when the planning commission wants to get more detail or dig into a specific proposal or project than you would normally get through a public hearing process. I'm sure you've all been through work sessions. You know what I'm talking about. They provide a little more time for the, the planning staff and other professionals, could be consultants, architects, engineers, present information very specific to the, the issue or the agenda topic at hand. They're usually open to the public. Or they, they are open to the public, but it doesn't mean usually, you'd usually don't receive testimony from the public like you would in a public hearing. It is important that public hearings of the planning commission be conducted in a fair and consistent manner so that from meeting to meeting, the public sees a regular process being followed where there's that opportunity for public input. So people should be familiar with how the public hearing process works. You know, you see a lot of the same people showing up at your public hearings. We're all familiar with that. They're, they're very familiar. We strongly would recommend development of, you know, rules and procedures and bylaws for a planning commission for both work sessions and public hearings. We have a lot of examples we can share with you if your jurisdiction doesn't have those or wants to update theirs. Okay. In reviewing the roles and responsibilities of planning commission and Board of Appeals member, it's important essentially to do your homework. This is why I was thanking you all at the beginning for your volunteer efforts, because I know it's not only just showing up to meetings. You often have a lot of homework. A lot of this is on staff too, to make sure you get your homework in enough time, right? If the staff sends you a 50-page agenda packet to read the night before your, your planning commission, you know, that's on them. But this does require homework, so you need to be, you know, know ahead of time the information that's going to be presented at a public hearing or a work session. So you're familiar with it and informed. Jurisdictions should provide an overview of the material being transmitted and how to make the best use of it. This should also be pretty standardized so the planning commissioners and the Board of Appeals members know what to expect, just like the public would know in a public hearing. Items could include staff reports, site plans, plot plans and other special studies or documents. Things we talked about earlier, environmental studies, traffic studies. Site plans, such as the one illustrated here, which I'm sure you're very familiar with, typically show the layout of roads, stormwater facilities, specific site data tabulated for you, landscaping, buildings and the like. So I'm almost done here. So the septic laws, anybody here worked with the septic law before? Tier, or tier maps? Yeah, no, you just have to say it in different ways. Yes, yes. Septic law, growth tier maps, yes, yes. So this is the Sustainable Growth and Agricultural Preservation Act, that's the formal name of 2012. And we have a lot of resources on our, our MDP webpage dedicated to this and some, I'm not an expert on this, it's a very complicated law. But if you want to talk to an expert, we do have those. They're just not here in the room. But under this law, local jurisdictions were to identify areas or tiers where new subdivisions will be served by either onsite septic systems or public sewer systems. The tiers are based largely on, on local land use plans, zoning, water and sewer plans, agricultural plans, and then the nature of the, the land itself. The tier maps, tier maps must have been adopted by 2012. So there's, there's aspects of this law that are related to 2012 specifically, and then aspects of the law that, and the requirements that continued on afterwards. So some jurisdictions never adopted a tier map. But if you didn't adopt a tier map, then you could not permit major subdivisions on septic. So the idea was to designate those areas would be tier three that you could permit major subdivisions defined as five or more, or subdivision of five or more lots on septic. So the planning board or planning commission has a role when it comes to reviewing major subdivisions in tier three areas. If your jurisdiction has a tier map. So again, any major subdivision, which is five or more, unless defined differently in local law, you could, you could go more strict. You could create, you could say your, your major subdivisions were more than five units or lots, but you could not go less. Chuck can correct me if I'm wrong about any of this because he knows a lot more about it than I do. Any major subdivision in a tier three area, right? That's the areas where they're, they are to be permitted on septic. Needs would be reviewed through a public hearing by the planning, planning board or commission. Whether that body is currently tasked with reviewing major subdivisions elsewhere or not, the law specifically tasks them with that. The planning board needs to consider the cost of providing local government services to that major subdivision and what impacts the subdivision will have on environmental and natural resources. A whole lot more to be said about planning commissioners and Board of Appeals members' roles, but those are just some of the, the specific ones we wanted to point out to in addition to the comprehensive plan. I will go through this review and then I'll take questions. All right, a comprehensive plan is a reflection of, I think we know the answer.
B.
All the above. Yes, the vision for the future, evolution, decisions and trends, goals, objectives and policies. How many visions are there? 12. Yet to be known what the future number will be. Okay, what was the original number? There you go. The comprehensive plan process, we know this. You could probably add many more to that list. Is this true? That's true. Review. That's a tricky question. Yes, it's required to be reviewed every 10 years, but again, not necessarily updated. You review it and determine, like this would be for like small, slower growth communities, like, you know, we're, we're real slow growth, things haven't changed. We like how this is. We like what the comp plan we adopted 10, 12 years ago is saying, well, it'd be 10 years. But 10 years ago is, is saying, you know, then we would just ask you to send a letter to the Maryland Department of Planning and to your legislative body, letting them know that we're going to keep this. But it demonstrates that you went through the review process. Any questions? Comprehensive plans or otherwise? Okay, anything online, Chuck?
No questions online.
Okay. Well, then it's turning it over to you. I guess you want me to advance the slides?
Yeah, you'll, you'll, you'll advance the slides for me since you're, you're controlling the horizontal and the vertical.
Oh, wow, I got lots of control here, horizontal and the vertical. All right, well, I'm going to turn it over to Chuck and then I'm going to, Chuck, your, your camera's a little off the screen. That's my, I did that on purpose. I'm going to move you back on screen.
Okay.
On to you now.
All right. Well, thank you again for those that are in Ocean City and for those that are online. Again, my name is Chuck Boyd. I'm the Assistant Secretary for Planning Services for the Maryland Department of Planning. I'm batting cleanup and going to give over some growth management tools that are available to you at the local level for you to, to take advantage of or at least be aware of along the way. So next slide. The, the most used, most common, most powerful tool you have in your, your, your toolbox dealing with growth management or growth issues or planning issues is the zoning regulations. And this is where we've talked about it already, and you're probably very familiar with it, where you have a, 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 a text of the, the document that lays out a variety of uses, relationships, et cetera. And so, and it's typically associated with the map. And it covers, again, the range of uses, densities, intensities, mixed uses, et cetera. Gives you the bulk massing of, of the structures that you want to have in certain zoning districts along the way. Next slide. This is the typical zoning map you see where every piece of property in your jurisdiction is assigned to a specific zoning district. And there may be overlay districts and floating districts. And, and we talked, I think, already with Adam about some of those overlay and floating districts. Next slide. Again, traditional ordinances, Euclidean zoning usually involves laying out a, a set of uses and those uses are separate from other uses in a community. Well, and Euclidean zoning, you know, back in 1926 and, and those few years before that, laid out the separation of uses to keep the fat rendering plant away from the residential area, the industrial area away from residential, et cetera, et cetera. And it has caused, you know, a lot more movement of people to and from places of employment. It's not the, the, what was historically occurred for hundreds of years before. I'm, and I live in Frederick and we have a very vibrant downtown that has residential on top of commercial in areas. And that was what it was before and, and they didn't really put it in an ordinance and said, had to be that way. It, it happened, happened organically. Recognizing that issue, the, the benefits of having mixed use, the, the typical Euclidean zoning added it often afterwards and said, mixed uses and allowing that. And it started to quantify that bit. Next slide. In addition to those, those traditional zoning districts, there are overlays districts that are available. And these tend to not regulate per se the actual use of the property within, on top of a zoning district. So the residential zoning district may be there and there may be an overlay. The overlay may be historic and so that it, it, it doesn't change the underlying use of the property. It means that there may be a special review process that's entailed to, to be more, to address a particular concern. There are often other types of overlays. It could be because you have a a highway going through your area, you may want to put a noise protection around those areas that are immediately adjacent to it. You may have an environmental area that you need to have some specific protections to it. So these overlays tend to add procedural process to the review of any type of development, but often don't change the underlying permissible uses that are allowed in those districts. Next slide. One of the things that is becoming more common is recognizing that you, the Euclidean zoning, you know, controlling those specific uses, one, isn't always the way it was many years ago. And, and two, it really puts you in a box and, and often separates uses requiring people to commute from where they work and to the, to where they, where they live, to where they work or to they go shopping. And so you often increase the amount of transportation needs to serve that, that, that community. I knew that another way of dealing with this is called form-based zoning. It's, it's a, it, it's not for the faint of heart. It does require a little bit more planning and details. But it regulates uses more by the, the look from the public rights of way. And so it regulates the, 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 the massing of the structure and allows for greater flexibility of what's actually inside the, the, the structure itself. And again, it relates to the, the, the rights of way or other areas so that you have more predictability in terms of, of the structures, but less control over the uses. And so it's another option out there and some jurisdictions are pursuing form-based zoning. Next slide. The second most powerful tool you have in your, your toolbox is dealing with subdivision regulations. Subdivision regulations are the process of which you are dividing land into one or more lots. And conversely, you could at times do some, use subdivision to combine lots together through that process. So it, it is the way you take your plan for particularly an area that is undeveloped right now. Maybe it's, it's, it's a farm that's been annexed into your community. You take that, that, that comprehensive plan that shows that there's a right of way that you have planned to, to go through that. While that subdivision process and the developer would then utilize that plan using the subdivision layout, a, a preliminary subdivision plat of the property and then go through the final separation and division of land, dedicating the right of way, improving the right of way. All of that process is laid out in your subdivision regulations so that you have a, a, a planned process, but you also coordinate the, the recordation and the establishment of defined parcels that can then be conveyed and sold or, or, or in the case of, of public rights way conveyed to the public, to the jurisdiction. Next slide. As part of the subdivision regulations, particularly in related to highways or your, your rights of ways that you're creating, you typically will include some certain types of standards for that along the way. So you will specify certain improvement standards, whether or not it's including. So you will specify certain improvement standards, whether or not it's including curb sidewalks, street trees, street lights. You, you may incorporate in there preservation of areas or reservation of areas now for dealing with broadband or other types of utilities that are, are often within those, those rights of way areas. Or you set aside an easement through that process. The subdivision process will lay out in the local governments how they deal with these issues along the way. So that you can develop i- in, in a planned manner, the, the community. Often you will lay out, for example, boulevards, landscaping standards along the way into that process. And, and of course, the subdivision planning process, which is the culmination of the subdivision is where you put together a, a lot layout, a description of individual lots so that gets recorded in the courthouse and then property deeds can reference that, that division of land for conveyance of property, next slide. The third most powerful tool, I think, in your toolbox is your planning of water and sewer plants. The preparation of water and sewer plants. This responsibility is delegated to the counties. And so for municipalities, it's critical that you work in close collaboration with the county. And we can go into details about sometimes when the municipalities and the, and the county don't agree with each other. But ultimately, and, and quite frankly, o- often municipalities do have they own their water and sewer plants and, but they are often incorporated, they are incorporated into a countywide plan that lays out those facilities specifying the capacities of those things. And then you have service areas around them, and as, this goes back to the mention that Joe had that in some cases, local jurisdictions may choose not to have a septic tier map because they in fact intend that area to be fully served by public water and sewer by the municipality. And therefore, they may not need a, a, a septic map because they're, they're planning for that. So this, the water and sewer plans deal with the issue of the service area, also the timing of how they expand and serve those areas. It deals with any kind of capital improvements, you know, a new water tower, upgrading of treatment plants. And it needs to be reviewed every three years, and so again, working in close collaboration with the county. You should be providing updates to the service areas. Some jurisdictions do quarterly updates, some do will manually, depending upon the need in the jurisdictions for, to have a, an updated plan. Again, point out that there's a relationship between municipality, the county. And ultimately, water and sewer plans are approved by Maryland Department of the Environment, next slide. So these are some of the basic things that you need to have in that water and sewer plan, it really drives development, future approvals. Depending upon how you have a, a new area, it's annexed, maybe outside of the water and sewer service area. Once it's annexed, you may change that and add it into your service area. It then needs to be incorporated into the county's plan and ultimately approved by MDE. You may do that a few times from a ten years, be into the ten year plan and then in, into a, a, a subsequent phase, what's called like WS three, W three S three, it means it's, it's in the subdivision process, but it's not ready for service right now. So all through that, that water and sewer master planning process, you deal with those issues of phasing of development. It also should deal with your issues of upgrades and extension, this gets back to the capacity analysis along the way, next slide. So again, you focus in on, when you water suit plan on those future service areas. You want to ensure consistency of their plan, if you do have an area municipal growth element for a future area. You want to incorporate that in a, in a phased expansion of your water and sewer plant. There's a relationship to, to the projections, as mentioned before, with, with regard to the the school side of things. We do the best job we can to project for these things, we try to incorporate those in our capital improvements planning process. And it, sometimes we get it right and sometimes we don't. Important thing to do with water and sewer plans, a lot of times people don't realize that you're passing over properties to serve this property that is the immediate one. We have these infill issues that, that, well, what about them, have you factored those into the process? So it's important to recognize that as you expand your collection and, and, and distribution system, that you factor in serving all of the properties within that area. Cause at one point, that, that vacant piece of property may come back and say, well, what about me? And you want to sure you have capacity built into your system in those areas. And then obviously dealing with a variety of them, types of uses, certain employment uses such as a, a bottling plant uses a lot of water. Commercial areas don't use as much water or sewer. So, so you want to factor in the different types of employment uses that, that require different types of water service. Next slide. I've already talked a little bit about this issue, particularly relates to schools. The next tool that you can have in your, and currently there are thirteen counties and twenty-three municipalities that have adopted adequate pub- public facilities ordinances. And they all vary in the types of infrastructure that they are actually testing for. Most have a school test, but some include roads, water and sewer. And, and, and the important thing about APFO is that it is not intended to be a a tool to prevent development. What it is, is it's a tool that's supposed to be used to manage the growth to ensure that there is, that you've planned for the capital improvements to serve the area. And sometimes there are instances where a community grows so fast that they outstrip their capacities of their infrastructure. And so the APFO gives you the ability to put a little bit of a pause, not necessarily more tournament. Ideally, it will allow you to allocate development along the way and phase it in. So you don't have to resort toward moratoriums. APFOs are often combined together with impact fees so that new development can help pay for the infrastructure for that additional growth that, that originally wasn't building in the system, next slide. Again, as we have it right now, any jurisdiction can adopt them, development approvals contingent on providing that so that usually there is a standard that, that's established, whether or not it's A through F. And certain areas, a, a community may choose to have a different standard. So in a downtown situation, you may choose in your ordinance to say a level service D is acceptable and that is okay for the development in this area. In other areas, you say, well, no, we need to have at least a level service C in this area. So the APFOs are adjustable based upon, and you can, and, and communities should adjust them based upon the community standards. And it's applicable in that equip public facilities, which is a measure and, and a, a means by which to evaluate whether or not you have capacity in your, in your, your facilities for that future growth. Has to be reasonable and you have to factor it, next slide. We do have a reporting process, as Joe related, we have an annual reporting process. Every two years, if you have a jurisdiction that adopts an APFO, you have the requirement to, to submit us information on any restrictions that occur, and then we report on that to the General Assembly, next slide. I'm gonna move on, I, I'll look at my questions here, no questions on this side. Are there any questions in the audience on that portion?
You're good Chuck, you can keep going.
Okay, okay, moving on. So, capital budget improvement process i- is, is a critical implementation measure of growth and management in your communities. It, it's how you get the necessary infrastructure and support services. It could be, you know, schools, it could be a park, it could be a community center, it could be roads. There are a variety of things that you want to put in that, and it's based upon your, your comprehensive plan, next slide. So these are the typical sources of revenue, general fund, you may bond. Some communities are what are called entitlement communities, CDBG. The state has the Program Open Space Program, there are a variety of other funding sources out there. Last one I mentioned was the impact fees, next slide. So again, this, this is the typical planning process that for the capital improvements, you inventory your existing, you evaluate whether or not you have capacities or, or there's a need in the community for enhancements to your capital improvements. You combine all this information together, you, you evaluate it and then you establish your priorities. And then you obviously go through the review and approval process. And then finally, you have to monitor to make sure that you're actually addressing those issues. And we're seeing a, a lot of times that monitoring is not as closely tied back into the CIP as possible, which is usually where people get in trouble and, and find things that are just not being maintained as well as they could be, next slide. For municipalities, MML, this is a perfect one. Municipal annexations is a very powerful tool because this is the one, one time that local governments are actually in the driver's seat, I should say municipalities are in the driver's seat. Typically, you control your water and sewer in an area and someone wants to annex for the purposes of connecting to that water and sewer. Well, you don't have to say yes, sometimes it, it may be a reason for, you know, a health and safety issue. But a lot of times it's really related to the desire for that area to subdivide and be developed. And so in those instances, the, again, the municipalities and the control, they, they are required to develop a municipal annexation plan for that area, but they all, also it's a negotiation with the developer of that property. For example, you then put in whatever conditions and you establish your, your zoning for that. But you, it needs to be coordinated with that municipal growth element so that it is in fact planned for your community, next slide. Typical requirements for annexations are obviously, it's got to be contiguous to, to the municipality. You cannot annex something that's, you know, half a mile away and there's no connection. Maryland has a really relatively liberal interpretation of what's connected or contiguous. So there are times that people have used rights of way for a relatively short distance to become connected. The more you stretch it, the more likelihood you could be challenged by someone that doesn't agree with that change. Obviously, you can't be, you can't annex something that's also in another jurisdiction and you can't create an enclave. So these are the things that we typically review as part of our review, and then we provide you some guidance based upon the provision of whether or not it's an intensification beyond what the county's plan is, so we give you that information. And there's a thirty day review prior to the annexation, next slide. Rules for development newly, again, you can actually control that use and you can limit densities, you can, can control certain developments that you don't want to have happen in an area. So, and they, they could choose not to annex, so, so it, it's, it's not the, the typical situation where you have to accept what the developer wants to do. It's usually a negotiated arrangement in those areas, that's why this annexation plans are important for that process, next slide. This is an area that, that doesn't get as much attention as, as it could. If you recall, Adam mentioned before about the issue of Maryland is a late vesting state. And the developer rights and responsibility agreement provision in the land use article enables a local government to work with a developer to come to an agreement on establishing certain conditions of the development, this may be related to the issue of how many units are allowed, the intensity of it, the types of improvements, et cetera. And they're putting into a document that, that is going through, goes through a public review process. But one of the things that the developer gets out of that, that, that public review and putting it down in paper is they have the ability through this agreement to have some degree of certainty. They can go to the bank and say, okay, I've gotten this development agreement and I'm assured at least for the next five years. The current law says it has to be, it's valid for at least five years unless extended or mutually agreed upon and during the agreement process. So we have seen some developer rights and responsibility agreements for twenty years. So thi- this is a very powerful tool that could provide for some certainty in developments that at one point, because we're a late vesting state, our could be challenged and laws could change that could upend a development that was thought to be initially a, a, an asset to the community in that moving forward, next slide. So at this point, I'm wrapping up here real quick, Department of Planning has a whole bunch of different resources. But I will acknowledge we have great partners at MML and Mako that also have tools and resources along the way. Joe mentioned our regional planners, they're, they're, they're embedded in the communities out there and they are your go-to to, to start the process of, of connecting us and other state agencies, whatever your local issues are, next slide. Okay, real quick questions, next slide. Through zoning can change through. A is the comprehensive process is the answer, next slide. Subdivision should show the proposed location of and what Joe said, D, all the above, next slide. According to the state law, the county water and sewer plant should be kept current every three years, B. Next slide. Finding capital broads can include the following. And again, D, all the above. Next slide. Unless amended or extended by local government, how long the development rights and responsibility agreement? B, five years. Which of the following is true about newly annexed areas, must be contiguous to existing property? Can't be within another minute, another incorporated municipality, can't create unincorporated on flights. D, all the above, again, I like that, all the above, okay. I'm gonna turn it back to Joe, other than to say, first of all, thank you all for participating, thank you for your service to your communities. And we are here for any final questions, I did have one up. John, Brennan had a question, I'm gonna see if I can allow you to talk, John, if you're able to, you can unmute yourself and, and ask your question.
Yeah, my, my question was, again, with an annexation, ultimately, it would have to be in the ultimate town growth boundaries to be allowed to be annexed, is that correct? Like if a parcel is outside the corporate limits, outside of our ultimate growth boundaries, it would have to be in our comp plan showing that that is within our ultimate town boundary.
So I'm gonna give you the non-legal answer, the answer, the answer is yes. The, the, and we have advised jurisdictions, if they don't have their annexed properties in their municipal growth element, they are in jeopardy of being challenged in court. The law says that it is to be in the comprehensive plan and in the municipal growth element. That's, it's real clear on that. But, but people have not necessarily done it in that sequence and they are they're, they're subject to being challenged.
The law, if I can remember what the local government article says, if I'm quoting correctly, it says that annexations must be consistent with the municipal growth element.
Right, so back to my point, it, it would have to be in our ultimate growth boundaries to be able to be eligible to be annexed.
Yeah, again. Yeah, again, yes, but I'm not a lawyer. And 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 your your lawyer will will advise you along the way. And from a planner, pure professional planner, the answer is yes. We we would strongly encourage anyone that they should amend their comprehensive plan, their municipal growth element first. If the 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 annexed property is not in their municipal growth element before they annex it. But again, that's a legal question that we're not going to touch.
I got you and I understand your your position. Thank you.
The one thing I'll add is like, John, you use the term, I think, ultimate growth boundary or or something like that. Not every comp plan has to have or municipal growth element has to have the term ultimate growth boundary, right? So it's has to be consistent with your municipal growth element. As I said earlier, that could be, it could include a map, it include could include a term like ultimate growth boundary. Or it could include a description of the properties you may annex. So for John's example, if they have an ultimate growth boundary and that's in their plan and described in their plan. Yes, it needs to be in that, but that doesn't mean you all need to use the same thing. You need to somehow make an annexation pretty obvious or apparent in your municipal growth element that it will be, could potentially be annexed.
And on that point, I was just thinking also, you know, that amendment would have to also include the water and sewer master plan as as a priority area as well for water and sewer. I appreciate your help.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions? I've got one question. An annexation cannot be approved for annexation if outside of the ultimate pattern. Again, we just answered that. Yeah, thank you, John.
No worries.
Thank you, Chuck. I I guess I will wrap it up if there are no other questions.
No other questions this side.
We're going to get out right on time. We used to try to do this course. We have, probably will again in the future in three hours and it's just really condensed. So thank you all for sticking with us for over four hours on the last day of this conference in this windowless room. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that's how important planning commissioners are. They get the last session. I will say thank you. Make sure, I know we've said it multiple times, make sure you signed in that we can read your email address. I'm going to double check if your handwriting is anything like mine, that it's actually, your G's look like G's or whatever. So because otherwise, we're going to get kicked back. We want to make sure we get your certificate to you. Even if you already completed the class, we'll still still send you another one. I want to make one plug for the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association. If you're not familiar with that, or it's a small organization. But it it does provide resources and support to planning commissioners and board of appeals members. They are coordinating or collaborating with the Maryland American, the American Planning Association Maryland chapter for a conference this October in Ellicott City, October twentieth through twenty second at Turf Valley. Information has already gone out about requests for session proposals, sponsorships. We should have a registration page set up soon. I support the the M P, Maryland Planning Commissioner Association or M P C A. I also support the A P A. So I'm on the conference planning committee. But the the registration cost is is very reasonable. It's not published yet, but I can tell you it's going to be really reasonable. So if you want some more planning specific, this is planning specific conference and there will be resources specific to planning commissioners there, we encourage you to consider attending that conference. And looking up the the M P C A, we're doing a a a regional workshop in Chrisfield later in July that A C, who was here earlier and I mentioned, he's helping me coordinate that. We'll be back down this way. Thank you all very much. Get home safe wherever you're you're going. And it's going to be hot out there, I think, today. So be careful. All right, thank you.
Thank you for everyone's participation. Bye.